Welcome to the Planning Commission, Santa Barbara County Planning Commission Meeting of May 14th. If you'll all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good morning, Ms. Abresh, Mr. Villalobos, and Letitia. Good morning.
Good morning.
Who will be doing our TV coverage announcement this morning? Welcome. Please go ahead.
Planning Commission hearings are televised live on Santa Barbara Television, CSB-TV, Channel 20, at 9:00 AM in the South Coast, Lompoc, Santa Inez Valley, Santa Maria, and Orchid areas. Rebroadcast of the Planning Commission hearings are on Fridays at 5:00 PM on CSB-TV, Channel 20. And now for the roll call. Commissioner Blau.
Here.
Commissioner Cooney.
Here.
Commissioner Valencia.
Here.
Commissioner Jackson.
Here.
And for the record, Commissioner Brown is absent.
Okay. Thank you very much. Ms. Abresh, if we can begin with our Agenda Status Report.
Thank you, Chair Jackson, Commissioners. We've got three items on our agenda today. They're regularly -- regular agenda items. The first one, however, was previously heard and continued. I believe that -- anyways, I'm sorry. The first one was continued from May 07th. And then we've got two regular agenda items, and we're ready to go on all three of those.
We have a projection report before us. Do you want to take us through that as well?
Yes, Chair Jackson. The projection report is looking to get a little filled up. We have one change to it on Page 3. On June 11th, we removed an item. That was the Los Alamos Community Plan and Belt Street Design Guidelines. That item was moved because at the last LAPEC hearing, the Long Range Planning Staff noted that two of the LAPEC members were absent, and they didn't want to make a recommendation at that point. They wanted to wait until they had a full group. So, they're going to be meeting with the LAPEC again on June 16th, and then they'll be coming back to your commission or to your commission on July 9th.
July 9th.
In addition, on the June 11th meeting, I just wanted to let you know that there will be no live TV coverage. That week is budget hearings at the Board, and so the Board's items will be covered. Okay? Aside from that, we don't have any other changes to the projection report.
Any Commissioner questions regarding the projection report? Okay. Seeing none at this time, I will go to the public. We have at this juncture in our meeting, public comment on items that are not agendized for today. If you are interested in speaking to an item not agendized for today and could provide Commissioner Blau with a speaker slip, perhaps give me a heads-up that there is an interest. I don't see any at this time going once. It looks as if we have no public comment at this point, so we'll go -- I'll bring it back to the commission. And we'll have Planning Commissioner informational reports. My colleagues, do we have any Planning Commissioner informational reports for today? Doesn't appear so. So, Ms. Abresh, do we have any divisional briefings for today?
Chairman Jackson, we do not have any divisional briefings today.
Okay. And do we have a Director's Report? Is -- ah, I see Mr. Baker. Welcome, sir.
Yes. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. There were no items specifically related to the Planning Commission that were on the agenda yesterday. I should note that you will be -- that there have been three appeals of your Tranqian Ridge decision. One by ExxonMobil, one by a gentleman by Mr. Bell, named Mr. Bell. The Vaquero Group has also filed one, and then Sunset has also filed a -- I won't call it an appeal, and Mr. Allen can speak to it maybe more than I can, but they've questioned your decision with regard to being a Brown Act violation, which I believe is going to be on your agenda for May 28th. That being a concern that you've made a decision based on an agreement that was made between some environmental groups and PXP, which we clearly know that that was not available to you, so you couldn't have made it, but there still is a decision that has to be made as a part of the commission ratifying that that was not a part of your decision. Yesterday's meeting did contain a lot of discussion about revenue alter and deeds, and I'd be happy to respond to any questions you might have if you happen to watch that or have some concerns about it. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Baker from Commissioners? Okay. Well, thank you very much, Mr. Baker, and we will press on. We're ready to begin our standard agenda. The first item, Ms. Rodriguez, would you like to read it into the record, please?
Thank you, Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of West Coast Environmental Representatives for the Leaseholder and Mine Operator Trust Materials Incorporated to consider the following application filed on June 17, 2003, 03CUP 37 03RPP 2, and to approve the Environmental Impact Report 05EIR 1 pursuant to the state guidelines for the implementation of CECL.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I will ask my colleagues if there are any ex parte or site visit disclosures they would like to make at this time. Commissioner Blau.
Not since the last disclosure prior to the earlier hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also, since the last time, I haven't had any disclosures, but I did have an extensive review of the site with the operator.
Okay. Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, I visited the site prior to our earlier hearing last year. I have not had any ex parte communications since that time, to the best of my knowledge.
Okay. For myself, if you're in the audience, you recognize there's a different face from the 3rd District Chair here, and it is mine. I have not had any site visits per se, or escorted site visits, but what I did do was I watched in its entirety the tape of the May 30th meeting. And I have been contacted but did not hook up with representatives from one of the citizens' groups. But I do feel a competent understanding of the issues. Spent a fair amount of time. If I may make a comment, that was one of the civility represented in that particular hearing for the size and passion that was represented was something that I was very impressed with. So my knowledge base comes from the tape, and I feel comfortable with that, and therefore I will be pressing on today with that. That being the case, Mr. Kaiser, are we prepared for a staff presentation?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The bad news is that with a bit of nasal congestion, it's going to be even more irritating to hear my voice today than it usually is. Having said that, as you know, I've been blessed with a set of circumstances that's allowed me to surround myself with the best and brightest, and you're going to see that later today with a couple of other items. And with this item as well, to my left is John Larson. He's the author of the Environmental Impact Report, not one but two draft EIRs and the final EIR for the Diamond Rock Mine. To his left is Steve Rodriguez, the planner for this case and author of the staff report and earlier staff reports, and he's got a presentation today to sort of recap where we've been and try to focus the Planning Commission and hopefully the public comment on the issues of the day, which is, of course, a return trip to the Planning Commission for final action. With that, I can turn it over to Steve.
Okay. Thank you, Gary. As you've just heard, the -- this is a return visit for the Diamond Rock Sand and Gravel Quarry. This will be the third time that this project has been before your commission. At the May 30th hearing, your commission accepted extensive public testimony about the project. A lot of that testimony centered on a number of issues, including -- and dominating the concerns was traffic volume created by the project, traffic safety, impacts to certain sensitive plant and animal species at the project site, impacts related to groundwater use, and hydrology impacts associated with the mining project. Responses to all of those major comments were provided in the July 11th staff report that was provided to you. In that staff report, there was also additional evaluation of what is known as Condition 34, which is a traffic control measure that has been proposed for the project to limit traffic generation at the project site, and more specifically, truck trips through the Ojai Valley area. And we'll be discussing Condition 34 a little bit more this morning. At the July 11th hearing, your commission conceptually approved the conditional use permit and reclamation plan proposed for the project. The approval was on a conceptual basis because state law requires that the reclamation plan be reviewed by the California Office of Mine Reclamation. They have a 30-day period to do that. We did receive their comments, and they were relatively minor, and the reclamation plan that you've been provided copies with addresses the comments that were made by OMR. And we'll talk more about those today also. So, based on the previous review and action by your commission on this project, I'm going to focus my comments today on the OMR letter, changes to the reclamation plan, and several new information items that have been presented to the Planning Department regarding this project. So today's hearing, we're going to talk about the reclamation plan. I'm going to provide some information about revisions that have been made to Condition Number 34, and address some questions that have been provided by a community group in the Cuyama Valley area. They call themselves Save the Cuyama Valley. They presented us a letter with a number of questions, and we'll go over some of those today. Just as a quick overview of the project, it is a sand and gravel quarry in the Cuyama River. You can see the outline of the project site on the slide. The -- this worked a minute ago. Well, anyway, the -- let's see if you can get that. The access is provided by Highway 33 on the right-hand side of the slide. We'll find it later. There's a processing area. Where? Thank you. I'm sorry. Highway 33 over here. This would be the quarry area, the processing area. Just a little bit more detail about the site plan. What you can see here is this area would be set aside for habitat restoration, the mining area, the processing area. This area would continue to be used for agricultural production. This is a site plan showing the contours of the mine pit. At full development, the mine pit would be approximately 90 feet deep. The reclamation plan that has been proposed for the project outlines the measures that would be implemented to return the project site to a condition similar to exists -- to what exists out at the site today when mining operations are completed. The mine pit in the river would be allowed to fill naturally as sediment is washed down the river by storm flows. The sediment would accumulate in the pit and fill it up. All of the mining equipment would be removed from the site. The area that had been used for processing the sand and gravel material would be returned to an agricultural operation. The reclamation plan also includes the restoration of a riverbank on the project site that I pointed out earlier. That area has been planted with a lot of non-native plant species. Those would be removed. Sometime in the past, as a method of bank stabilization, old cars were dumped into the river. Those would be removed, and the bank stabilized. A revegetation plan has been proposed for the project site, and the reclamation plan provides performance standards for that reclamation plan. The Office of Mine Reclamation provided several comments on the reclamation plan. Just quickly go through a couple of those. OMR had questions about the slope stability of the mine pit. A lot of those -- well, those comments addressed two different concerns. One is, as the pit is excavated, they may encounter subsurface conditions that can't be determined at this point, and those subsurface conditions could affect the stability of the mine slopes. So a provision has been added to the reclamation plan that periodic inspections of the site would be made by a geologist, and if necessary, to maintain stable slopes at the project site. Revisions to the mining plan could be made if necessary. The other concern was regarding liquefaction and slope stability. If there was a slope failure because of the saturated soils and liquefaction were to occur, would it affect a high-pressure gas line that is in the project area? It's about 360 feet from the pit. A site-specific evaluation of that potential impact was prepared, and it was determined that the slope failure could extend as far as about 140 feet away from the mine pit, but still a good distance away from the high-pressure gas line. So there would be no impact to the gas line. There was another concern about the project excavating in the river and perhaps exposing groundwater at some point in the future. A condition of approval has been added to the reclamation plan and CUP that's similar to a requirement that has been included in department-efficient game permits for the project, and that requires that the project maintain at least a six-feet separation between mining activities and groundwater. So if they were to encounter groundwater, they would have to backfill the pit up so they're six feet above groundwater, and would have to move to a different area of the project site and wait for groundwater levels to subside. OMR had concerns about maintaining a 50-foot setback between a low-flow channel and the pit. The applicant has proposed to use low-flow berms that have been -- were previously proposed to keep low flows from entering the pit. Those berms would be used to maintain the 50-foot setback between the pit and the low-flow channel, and that condition is also similar to a condition in the efficient game permit that is required for this project. Another comment from OMR was about a condition of approval that requires monitoring of erosion that would occur as a result of stream flows being diverted around the mine pit. That condition has been modified to require that that monitoring plan be prepared in cooperation with OMR and the Army Corps of Engineers. So everybody will get the information that they need for their permitting and monitoring requirements through the requirements of this condition of approval. And lastly, OMR had wanted to see some design information about a grade control structure that would be used to minimize erosion from water coming out of an adjacent creek that flows into the Cuyama River. That design study was done, reviewed by OMR, and they were okay with the results of that Getting on to the second topic for our presentation today, and this is Condition Number 34. This is the traffic control requirements. Right now, as Condition 34 reads, as it was conceptually approved by your commission, it prohibits project-related truck traffic from traveling through Ojai on State Route 33. Other provisions of the condition would allow traffic under certain conditions or circumstances in the future, things such as a regional truck transportation program adopted by other counties, Kern County, Ventura County, Santa Barbara County, or if Ventura County were to approve a mining project that would send traffic into Santa Barbara County. Under those kinds of circumstances, the project applicant would have been able to come back to the County of Santa Barbara, request an amendment to the conditional use permit to allow truck traffic to travel through Ojai. Condition 34 requires if such an amendment were filed, we would notify the county and city of Ojai of such a request by the applicant. And Condition 34 also had limitations on the number of truck trips, should they be allowed in the future, that could go through the Ojai Valley area, and that requirement was provided so the project would remain consistent with very stringent air quality thresholds that have been adopted for the Ojai Valley airshed by Ventura County. Since your commission last reviewed Condition Number 34, it's been, well, substantially revised. The condition still prohibits truck traffic from traveling through the Ojai area. There was a concern expressed that by prohibiting that truck traffic from traveling south on Highway 33, that the project would instead send those trips in other directions, northward primarily, and that those additional trips could result in impacts that were not evaluated by the EIR. In the staff report from the last hearing, there was an analysis of those potential impacts. They were determined to be not significant or could be reduced to less than significant with mitigation measures, conditions of approval already included in the CUP. But to make sure, and to be absolutely sure, that the project would not result in impacts that had not been fully disclosed by the EIR, the applicant has agreed to just eliminate the truck traffic that the EIR previously analyzed as going through the Ojai area, and that was 20% of the overall project traffic. 20% would be about 18 truck trips during typical production periods at the mine, and about 28 truck trips during peak production periods. So, as the condition now reads, the total amount of traffic that could be generated by the project has been reduced by those numbers about 20%. So with this revision to Condition Number 34, what does that mean in terms of the conditional use permit and reclamation plan? Project-related traffic is still prohibited from traveling through the Ojai area. The previous provisions of Condition 34 that specified regional changes or agreements between counties that would enable the applicant to come back to Santa Barbara County and request an amendment to send truck trips through Ojai, those provisions have been eliminated from the condition. There are no longer built-in provisions that would allow the project applicant to change his truck distribution patterns. The provision that the project -- that future truck traffic going through the Ojai Valley airshed would have to be consistent with the air quality thresholds has also been removed because there will be no truck traffic going through the Ojai Valley airshed. It's no longer necessary to have that condition. The provision that should the applicant, in the future, come in to request an amendment to the CUP to change traffic distribution, should that happen, the requirement to notify Ventura County and the city of Ojai has been retained, although there are no longer any built-in provisions that would allow the applicant the opportunity to come in and modify his permit. We can't exclude him from doing that in the future. So should he choose to request a modification, we still have the requirements to notify the adjacent jurisdictions. There've been some other changes to conditions of approval. As a result of the Condition 34 changes, the project description now reflects the maximum number of truck trips per day that can be generated by the project. 74 trips per day under average conditions, 110 trips per day under peak conditions, and those are a 20% reduction when compared to the previous truck trips. Other conditions, Condition 21 has been omitted. This condition prohibited project-related traffic from traveling through the Ojai Valley during peak hours, and that was to be consistent with stringent traffic impact thresholds that have been adopted by Ventura County. Condition 23B was eliminated. That was a condition that prohibited traffic from the project from going past a high school that's adjacent to Highway 33. That condition specified certain hours where the truck traffic would not be permitted to occur. And Condition Number 28 has been modified. This condition limits truck traffic to prevent a possible air quality NOX emission impact in Santa Barbara County. This condition has been retained, but it's been modified to be consistent with the requirements of Condition Number 34. There was another concern expressed, a ramification of Condition 34. Just quickly go over some truck travel scenarios here. Prior to the requirements of Condition 34, it was intended that about 20% of the project-related traffic would travel down Highway 33 and have access to the Ventura area, and that was a distance of about 75 miles. Right now, the Ventura area is getting its gravel aggregate resources primarily from here in Palmdale. Those truck trips take Highway 14 to 5, 5 to 18, 5 to State Route 118, 18 to 23, and into the Ventura area via 101. That distance is about 100 miles. If truck traffic from Diamond Rock were to try to get access to the Ventura area, the most likely route would be up 33 to 166, over to 5. most likely route would be up thirty-three to one sixty-six, over to five, five all the way down to fourteen, no, excuse me, five to one eighteen, and then the same route over. That distance is about a hundred and fifty-five miles. Because of that increased distance, the cost of getting aggregate to the Ventura area, it really cannot compete any longer. Aggregate transportation costs are a major component of the cost getting it to the consumer. So, with a fifty-five mile haul distance differential, it really just no longer makes sense to consider the Ventura area as a market area for the Diamond Rock project. Concern was expressed that, well, what if material from Diamond Rock were to go south on thirty-three, take Lockwood Valley Road over to five, south on five, and then into the Ventura area? This distance from Diamond Rock to here, Lockwood Valley Road, is approximately fifty miles, plus or minus. This distance, Diamond Rock, one sixty-six to five, to this point is a little further. It's about seventy-five miles. At that point, I think you'd have to start considering time differences, you know, twenty of those extra miles, fifty versus seventy-five, are on Highway five versus the slower route on Lockwood Valley Road. So, I don't think there would be a distinct advantage in trying to take a perceived shortcut on Lockwood Valley Road. I guess the conclusion from this is that it doesn't really appear that this, the Ventura County area, is going to be a market any longer for the sand and gravel quarry. And then, lastly, go over a couple of comments that have been provided to us by the Save the Kwiyama Committee. The committee asked questions about project-related water use. The EIR did a very detailed analysis of the project's water use. It actually came up with water demand requirements that were slightly higher than were included in the applicant's application for the project. And it was determined that the water use requirements of the project would be below the threshold of a significance that's been adopted for the Kwiyama groundwater basin. There were questions about stream channel erosion caused by the project. The EIR evaluated a number of scenarios related to the project that could result in erosion impacts. It evaluated increases in water velocity, impacts related to the capture of sediment, sediment deficit downstream that could result in changes to the configuration of the channel. It evaluated impacts with and without the adjacent GPS mine and concluded that any erosion-related effects of the project, well, first it concluded that there could be erosion-related effects, but any effects that would result from the project would be minor and isolated and would not result in significant impacts to downstream or upstream infrastructure such as roads or bridges or other structures. We have an interesting situation here in that the downstream GPS mine has been in operation for about thirty years. That provides a real good in-stream actual data about the possibility of erosion-related impacts resulting from the proposed project, the Diamond Rock project. And it's interesting to note that after thirty years of operation, a big pit mine in the river, there have not been any signs of upstream or downstream degradation as a result of the operation of the downstream GPS project. There've been a lot of questions about the EIR's cumulative analysis. The EIR did evaluate cumulative impacts. Air quality and water use cumulative impacts are evaluated using county thresholds, and those thresholds indicate that if a project does not have a project-specific impact, then its cumulative impacts are not considerable and therefore its contribution to cumulative impacts are not significant. That's for air quality and water use impacts. The traffic, excuse me, the EIR evaluated traffic impacts by increasing vehicle traffic on Highway thirty-three and one sixty-six on a percentage basis over a period of years. And with those projected increases in vehicle traffic, those highways still operate at level of service A. So, we don't expect the Diamond Rock project to substantially contribute to significant traffic impact on those adjacent highways. Questions have been raised, well, the EIR didn't consider a proposed sand and gravel project that has been proposed in the project area called Richards Holding. That project application came in, I think it was the same day as the first hearing for this project, for the Diamond Rock project. SEQA was very clear that the consideration of cumulative projects, that the cutoff date for the projects that need to be evaluated is when the notice of preparation is filed for the project. Now, the notice of preparation was filed for this project, for the Diamond Rock project some time ago, but clearly, when a project is filed, you know, on the day of the first hearing, it's not reasonable for the environmental review for the Diamond Rock project to have to consider the newly proposed project. It'll be incumbent upon the Richards Holding project to evaluate the cumulative impacts, and cumulative includes past, current, and future projects. So, the burden of evaluation of cumulative impacts related to Richards Holding and the Diamond Rock project will clearly be borne by the Richards Holding project. There were concerns about project-related traffic impacts and concerns that there has been an emphasis on mitigation measures in the Ojai area, not in the Kwiyama area. The focus of the traffic mitigation has been on where the EIR has identified impacts. Impacts were identified in the Ojai area, and so there has been a lot of time and effort spent addressing those impacts. The traffic impacts in the Kwiyama area were less significant as described by the EIR. There was one impact that was identified, and that's truck turning movements from Highway thirty-three in and out of the project site. And so, there's a requirement that if Caltrans requires it, the project would have to provide a turn lane on Highway thirty-three. So, while it may seem unbalanced, the effort has been on where the impacts have been identified. And it just so happens that those impacts occurred out of Santa Barbara County, in Ventura County. I guess it should also be noted that with the implementation of the revised condition number thirty-four, project-related truck trips in Santa Barbara County and the Kwiyama area would also be reduced by twenty percent because there's twenty percent fewer trucks coming out of the project site. And then, lastly, there were concerns about the condition monitoring. How are we going to impose these truck traffic limitations? Sand and gravel projects, mining projects, come under much more scrutiny than other development projects. We have a mandate from the state that we inspect these projects once a year, and we get very cranky letters from the state if we're late in conducting those inspections. So, there are requirements that the project maintain weight records, truck trip records, and that will provide us with a good tool to monitor truck trips coming in and out of the project site. So, finally, recommendation by staff is that your commission approve the final EIR that's been prepared for the project, adopt the required findings that are included in Attachment A, approve the conditional use permit, subject to the conditions in Attachment B, and approve the reclamation plan, subject to the conditions that are also in Attachment B. And that concludes my long presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, if we have any pertinent to the staff report questions by planning commissioners, I will entertain those. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, thank you. I asked this question before, and I'm just gonna make a comment on it, I think. One of the things you didn't do in your ERs is to determine that by placing this mine and extracting gravel from this location, that we're actually reducing truck traffic for customers who are currently buying gravel from other operations. And your answer last time was is that we don't calculate it that way. Well, in taking a look at a number of EIRs over the past several months, I do find that other ERs and other consultants do make that determination. And we've seen some that say, by approving this project in this location, we're gonna reduce overall traffic and thereby reduce the NOX emissions. And I make that maybe as a comment here because I think that was lacking in this EIR. I think we're not giving the project credit for the fact that they're gonna be delivering gravel to customers who are currently buying it and having it trucked in through the county at a longer distance. And my concern is, I wonder if it's poss, I mean, I realize we're taking this as a recommendation to the board. They're gonna make the ultimate determination. And I'm curious if it's important that the board understands that by approving this project, they may be reducing the pollution in the county of Santa Barbara as opposed to have an indication that we're gonna have so many more tons of the nitric oxide. So, I'll pose that as a question to staff, and maybe you're gonna tell me that we're gonna do it differently in the future, or that maybe you could make that analysis before this goes to the board of supervisors.
It doesn't, yeah. Chairman Jackson, one clarification I'd like to make. Today is the final action on this project unless it is appealed.
I'm sorry.
So, there is no zone change. There's no general plan amendment. There's no reason that it would go to the board unless it's appealed. So, but I'll still try to answer your question because it's a good question. It involves assumptions. Where is the demand? Where is the supply? Where is it coming from? What are the distances? You know, I tried to do a little bit of that today, trying to demonstrate why Ventura is no longer going to be a market for this project. The analysis did not try to factor out, as you have noted, you know, what are those existing conditions? John, do you have any?
I don't have anything to add unless you wanna speculate about it now, which probably not gonna be a good thing.
And I guess the issue is that, you're asking us to make a determination, and that's just the fact that's kinda missing in this report, and I just don't wanna see it in the future. I mean, if a project's going to actually reduce the pollution in the county, we need to know that, or at least if it's gonna increase, we need to know that as well. I'm just concerned that this didn't do that. And as I say, when I asked the question last time, the answer was, that's the way we do it. Well, come to find out, that's not the way it's always done. I mean, we have seen a number of ERs here of late where they actually discuss the fact that by having this project in this location, it reduces traffic, therefore reduces the emissions. It's just a comment.
Mr. Chairman, I'll certainly take that as direction on how to work on EIRs in the future. For this particular project, just to kinda set some items straight, and it is discussed in the EIR under alternatives, Troshe's current supplies or more recent supplies that they've been using for their clients have been generally in the Santa Maria River Basin area. This location is more remote in that respect, so there would be an increase in travel distance. On the offsetting side, being closer to the larger market area in Ventura County, it would've had regional advantages in that regard, but now with the demise of condition thirty-four, that market opportunity and the regional advantages that it might have provided will be lost to the project. So, I understand the issue. I'll agree that it's important. EIRs, of course, over the decades, have tended to focus on the worst case, the worst-case scenarios in projects, and that's maybe one reason why in the past there was a hesitancy to try and picture more advantages of projects. But I certainly understand the issue. I agree that it's valid. I think for this particular project, however, if you were to go through and do that arithmetic, there may have been a regional advantage with access to the Ventura market. If that's gone, I don't think you're gonna see a significant reduction by locating Troshe's source of aggregate material at this location.
Great, thank you. That's a great answer. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Larson or Mr. Rodriguez, in the case of a county emergency, regional emergency, possibly even a state emergency, what happens to condition thirty-four? Do they have to come in for a revision to that condition, as you indicated before, that they have a right to? Or could they, does the state or the region or the county quickly can say, quickly, send the trucks through there, and let's get this material in wherever we need it? What happens?
Chairman Jackson, Mr. Valencia, there are provisions in the county's land use development code for emergency reactions such as that. I think it's the planning director has the ability to...
Common sense prevails.
Common sense prevails. And then, he is then required to report to the board of supervisors.
Okay. As an act of, get the paperwork, do the job, get the paperwork done later. Okay, fine. I just wanna make sure that we do.
Commissioner Cooney?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of questions to Mr. Rodriguez from his presentation. The first is with regard to Richards Holding. I don't recall discussion of that in prior hearings, certainly not the first one it was just applied for at that point, but I don't even recall it from the second. And I do think cumulative impacts on the areas surrounding the proposed site are very significant. In other cases where we've had environmental review began at a certain point, but information has come to the attention of staff during the processing of an application, we have amended or modified our EIRs to include the cumulative analysis of new projects, new information. But it seemed from your presentation as though you were taking the position that legally we didn't have to, and therefore, we didn't do it. Am I missing that?
Chair Jackson, Commissioner Cooney, the final EIR had been prepared when the application was submitted. There really wasn't an opportunity to go back and do some last-minute amendments to the EIR. It was finished. Therefore, the process and fairness to the applicant would dictate that we then follow the requirements of SEQA, which indicates that at some point, you have to set a point in time where you will no longer consider new projects as they are, you become aware of them.
Well, I guess I'm thinking of instances where we have had final EIRs done at the time of a planning commission hearing as a result of information produced at the hearing or prior to the hearing. We have sent back to staff the requests that additional environmental work be done, and what is produced is a supplemental environmental impact report, not changing the original one, but layering on top of it. And it appears that we haven't considered that here. It looks like, you know, there was a cutoff date... It looks like, you know, there was a cutoff date, this is new information. So we're putting the entire burden of the analysis, the cumulative analysis, on the last project to be filed, rather than considering it in this project. So we're really basically putting blinders on and saying, regardless of how many truck trips this new project might produce, we're not going to analyze it with regard to Diamond Rock. I'm not saying that's wrong, but it bothers me, and I just want to understand, is that our case here?
Commissioner Cooney, if, if Richards continues to be processed, if that continues...
Is that a Ventura County project?
No. It's Santa Barbara. That analysis will be done. It'll be done as, in the context of the cumulative analysis for the Richards project. Maybe that's different than the examples you've provided where, oh, we're going to, we need to do a supplement or an addendum or additional environmental review, because that would be the only vehicle to address those possible impacts. In this case, there is another opportunity, and that would be in the environmental review for the Richards project.
Okay. Mr. Chair, one other question if I continue. Another comment caught my attention. You were discussing, Mr. Rodriguez, the reduction in truck traffic through the Quiama Valley as being related to the cutback in truck traffic, which was assumed in the environmental review to be going through the Ojai Valley.
Correct.
And I think you were saying that the 20% reduction could be assumed to be going, to be applicable to the traffic through Quiama as well. But isn't it true that that very much depends on the pattern of delivery of trucks from the, from the Diamond Rock site? And you indicated that it would be unlikely now for the market to be in Ventura County. And I'm thinking that most of the market is likely to be in, in Santa Barbara County and in San Luis to the north, and as a result of that, the extra traffic that's produced in those markets could be heavily favored to go in that direction rather than up and beyond. So I just want to point out, if I'm wrong about that, I don't think you can apply the 20% reduction and say to the villages in Quiama Valley that there's going to be a 20% reduction due to the fact that we've lowered the overall number of trips. Am I clear?
Well, Commissioner Cooney, I guess as a point of clarification, and this was the concern, and perhaps the genesis of the revisions of Condition 34, was a concern that you just expressed, that if, if the project were going to be generating 90 trips per day, and 20% of those would have gone south of Ventura, now those same 20% could go north through the Quiama area. And that was an impact that may not have been disclosed to the public as well as it could have been through the EIR process. So to eliminate the potential for that impact, those 20%, those additional truck trips have been eliminated. They can't, they can't go out the driveway anymore and go anywhere.
Okay, but your assumption is that all of those truck trips are going through the Quiama Valley, as opposed to going up to Highway 5 and other points from there. You're saying that all of the reduced trips are going to be for the benefit of the Quiama Valley, and that didn't make sense to me because if you take out the trips that were going through Ojai, you still have 80% of the trips going north in some direction. Certainly, some of those, it was assumed, would be going to directions other than on 166 through the Quiama Valley. I'm just suggesting, based on what you've indicated in your staff report, that it's likely a great bulk of the remaining trips are going through the Quiama Valley. So I think, I think we need to be careful not to represent that we're going to have net reductions to Quiama Valley as a result of Condition 34 as revised. Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Okay, just, oh, Commissioner Blau, if you'd like...
Yes, just for my benefit, following up on Commissioner Cooney's questions about cumulative impact, is I understand what's happened, is you've, you've looked at the cumulative impact with Diamond Rock being added to everything else in the valley. And because the other application wasn't in process, it wasn't considered. But what happens for the benefit of the people in the audience and the community, if the next application comes in and it has an adverse effect when you do the community, they may not get approved. I mean, at some point, you're not going to, just because we approve, may approve this mine, doesn't mean we're going to approve the next 1, 2, 3, 10 that come in. At some point, there are too many mines, the cumulative impact is something you can't mitigate, and therefore, we say no at that point in time. So it's not like we're, that we haven't looked at the cumulative effect. What we've looked at and said, this one's okay, the next one may not be okay. Is that what you're telling us?
Commissioner Blau, yeah, without speculating whether the next one will be okay or not okay, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that there will be a time and place for that review to occur in a timely manner, and the burden of those cumulative impacts, and remember, cumulative is just not future, it's present and past projects that will be done if the Richards Holding project were to go forward.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Larson, this project is going to excavate about 9 million cubic yards over a period of 27 years, so that's about 500 tons a year, 16 hours a day. Where is all that coming from right now while we've been waiting for a year? Where, there hasn't been an impact to our roads from other areas bringing this material from long-range distances?
Mr. Chairman, maybe your applicant would be in a better position to answer that question.
It seems to me that...
There are several aggregate mines along the Santa Maria River. You have several others in northern Santa Barbara County, there's a few in Kern County. Mr. Rodriguez mentioned the Palmdale-Lancaster area, that's the dominant source for the Ventura County...
I suspect that there's trucks coming in from very long distances on our roads trying to meet this requirement that could be met here locally. So I think the impact, as Commissioner Blau was indicating before, there'd be less impact on the roads as a result. Thank you.
Just a couple of quick questions. First of all, help me out with what constitutes a where? Because it was, in terms of looking at an existing application, somebody give you a call and say, hey, I heard something's happening? There appears to be some kind of standard that constitutes a where to consider something within a cumulative impact analysis. Can you help me with that?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I can answer that. County staff maintains an ongoing and dynamic list of cumulative projects that we as consultants use on a pretty regular basis. So anytime we start a project with a county, the first thing you do is you go to that list, and you kind of block out from that list the projects that are in your region that you're going to consider. So for those issues which are amenable to analysis by referring to a list, then you have it in that fashion. You do rely on word of mouth and newspaper articles and any other information you can, and we do our very best to have an awareness of projects that are in the mill as we are working on an EIR for any given project. There are several topics or issues for which cumulative impact analysis relies on regional projections or relies on other structures rather than the list. Traffic is a good example. You don't try to compute the traffic from each and every individual project on the cumulative projects list. Instead, you use the regional traffic models generated that take into account all changes in land use off into the future. Same thing with air quality, we use regional air quality projections rather than a list of specific projects. So we do our very best to address cumulative impacts, and I, you know, I have to agree with Mr. Rodriguez, an application coming in after we've printed the final EIR, it's a little hard for, I mean, we're good, but we're not that good.
Okay, thank you. The other question I had is, what I recall from the presentations in the May 30th meeting from the applicant, was a significant discussion that the loads and trips are market-driven. And being market-driven, looking at the Santa Maria market as it was cast by the North County economic forecast, might tell me that perhaps trip, trip traffic might be down, and then to try and predict that the Ventura County market is sustaining the same burden. I would find that to be a fairly challenging bit of math to, because I was struck by the applicant's description of the deficit of resource, which does not, however, and she, I believe she made that very clear, does not necessarily translate into constant perpetual demand. As a result, there could be lags and not weeks with low trips, et cetera. So to make the broad-stroke assessment that the reduction of 20% will mean that it is an unbroken reduction going forward in the other 80%, I don't know that that's a fair analysis. Because you, it's market-driven, it can be up, it can be down at any given moment, and yet an EIR has a fixed, finite date. So, at any rate, with that, that's the, I don't think I really have a question around that. If there are no more commissioner questions, I have a speaker slip from the applicant, but this is normally the time where an applicant would be invited to participate. So I'm going to offer that opportunity right now for the applicant, if you can give me an estimate of how much time you expect you'll take.
Five minutes at the most. I'll be brief since we've been up here a few times.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. My name is Charisse Troche, I'm with Troche Materials, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, my father Steve Troche, also with Troche Materials. I want to take this opportunity to thank the staff who's been working diligently on this project that has seen a lot of interesting circumstances, and they've done a great job in particular, Gary, who's been on this project since, since the very beginning. I, I want to quickly review where we've come over the past year. We've made a number of concessions for this project over the last five years of review and administrative analysis within the county, and you heard a lot of that in the May hearing and also the June hearing last year. One of the issues that came up last year was this, was with Condition 34, and the fallout from that new condition and having been brought into the, the project late, late into the process. From that Condition 34, we had over the last year engaged in negotiations with the Stop the Trucks Coalition, which is based out of Ojai, to try to come up with some solutions that they were, that had raised, that they had concerns as a result of Condition 34. And as a result of those negotiations and extensive talks, we had made the request to the county to make the revisions to Condition 34 so that we would be eliminating any conditions that could allow us to travel through Ojai to Ventura County. And I want to make that, the point that the 20% reduction in the project is not just a 20% reduction, is not just reducing a market, but Ventura, you see, they get their material from Palmdale on great distances. It's not just market-driven by demand, but also price-driven. So material in Ventura is at a very high commodity right now because of their lack of reserves. So it was a very important market to us, which we've given up to address the concerns, and because of the concerns that were expressed heading north, and all the 20% of the trucks that would be diverted from not going south, we eliminated the 20% overall of the project, which is, which is a big reduction for us. And as far as the supply and demand in the market, we have a limited supply of construction-grade aggregates. There are mines, but there are construction-grade aggregates which are very difficult to locate and mine. And right now, we have two resources in our area, in our region, that supply construction-grade aggregates, and there are competitors. So again, the price is driven higher, and it makes it more difficult for us to operate efficiently. So this is why it's been in the process for 10 years for us to find our own supply of construction-grade aggregate. So it's been a long project and in our business plan for quite a while. With us today, we have John Heck with West Coast Environmental and Engineering, who's been our engineering consultant on this project for the last five years to answer any technical questions. And we have our legal counsel, Carrie Shapiro with Jeffrey Mangles, Butler &amp; Marmaro, to answer any procedural or SEQA questions that might come up in the hearing today. And I would like to request, if there are any new issues that do come up, that we have the opportunity to speak in response to any of those new issues that may come up. And I'd like to request that you support staff's recommendation to approve and certify this EIR. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Chairman Jackson, members of the commission, I'm John Heck with West Coast Environmental and Engineering. I wanted to add one quick comment to try to put the discussion on the 20% reduction comment in the Quiama Valley that, that Mr. Rodriguez made. I believe that what, what he was talking to is the Quiama Valley, which extends at the project site, up for another 10 miles, and then down to the 166. So you're completely correct, Commissioner Cooney, Chair Jackson, that doesn't necessarily translate to a reduction on the 166 in Quiama, but it absolutely does result in a 20% reduction at the project entrance and in the communities surrounding the project site. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, are there any commissioner questions for the applicant at this time? I don't see any lights. I do have one procedural issue, and I apologize for bringing this light. We did receive additional materials on this, and one of which I believe came at a date later than our norm, and one of the elements of the May 30th meeting that I watched was a significant discussion about our propriety in that regard. So I was not able to read one of, the last-minute one that came in, and I, I feel it would be inappropriate to accept it at this time. I'll look to my colleagues to see if there's any, any particular need on this, but I will say, that meeting certainly drove home our policy very clearly. Do my colleagues have any comments with regard to that? Commissioner Cooney?
Well, Mr. Chair, I certainly support the commission's policy. The letter was received three hours, almost four hours later than the deadline. I did have a chance to review it, I, I need to disclose that. There are issues that were raised in the letter that I, that I intend to express at some point in the hearing, and, and there was in particular an attachment to the letter from a UCSB professor of geology that I would be interested in hearing Mr. Heck comment on, if he's had a chance to review it. So we don't need to include the letter as part of the record, but due to the fact that I've considered it, I think I need to make the disclosure that I will bring out one or more issues raised by the letter.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I will point out that the folks who produced that letter have listed themselves on our speaker slip here, so that may contribute to the dialogue at that point, and so I think we'll move from there. Mr. Allen?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, as the commission, I'd suggest that you identify the letter for the record, and then determine whether you will or will not be moving it into the record.
Okay. I believe this is the letter from the San Luis Obispo Coast Keeper. The letter is dated May 12th, and says it was emailed. That is the letter which I am speaking to. Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I'm not going to move that the letter be introduced in the record, and so the author of the letter knows. The reason we do this is, there's been occasions where we've had letters, as many as I believe 50 pages, come to us the day of the meeting, the day before the meeting. It's impossible for us to read the letter, digest it, and understand it. In fact, if we do so, we're actually criticized by the rules that we operate under. We're supposed to sit here and pay attention to what you have to say. Now, I'm happy to hear that the author of the letter is here, you're more than welcome to get up and make into the public record the concerns that are in the letter, we just can't accept the letter itself. If we were to do that, we would be violated. If we were to do that, we would be violating our ethical duties to sit here and pay attention closely to what you have to say. So that's why we're not going to move it into the record, and consistently don't do that.
Okay, I don't, shall we have a specific motion not to accept? Okay, I don't see a motion to accept it. So at this time, we will move to our next phase, which is the public comment phase, unless my commissioners would like to take a brief recess. As it is, an hour, 10 minutes, I think I have roughly, one, two, three, four, five, six, probably about 10 to 11 speaker slips here. And I'm prepared to move on unless...
Does the staff need a break?
Seeing not, we will, I'm going to ask the, one other thing I did learn from the last meeting of May 30th is to remind people, if you have a cell phone, please turn it off. It can be a real problem for people, an interruption, so please turn it off or turn it to silent. And I'm going to ask that speakers, I'm going to discipline us all to stay within the three-minute timeframe as best we can. I have saved for the first speaker is Mr. Zannan from Save the Cuyama Valley. Welcome. He'll be followed by, the last name it looks to be is Goria?
Gorilla.
Okay.
Close enough. My name is Gene Zannan, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I am a spokesperson for Save the Cuyama Valley, which represents 450 residents of that valley who signed a declaration in opposition to the permitting of the Diamond Rock Mine. I left a message with Mr. Jackson indicating that I, if it was possible, to speak first, because I want to sort of bring you up to date as to what we're doing as an organization from the last time we were before you and provided public comment. Since that time, we have met with representatives from the Environmental Protection Agency out of San Francisco. We have also met with representatives from the Army Corps of Engineers in Ventura. We are in the process of putting a meeting together with the fishing game, I think it may be animal, fish and animal welfare, no, I'm not sure. We have talked to a number of nonprofit organizations, most of them based in Santa Barbara County, that are concerned about zoning and land use kinds of laws. We met with Mr. Baker, members of our group met with Mr. Baker and Mr. Kaiser regarding the questions that had been previously put on the board, and a discussion was made at that point. In anticipation of appeal to the Board of Supervisors, we have retained legal counsel. We have also aligned with Coast Keepers and San Luis Obispo to keep us appraised of the process, because quite frankly, we're a fairly clueless bunch to a certain degree, although we're catching up fairly quickly. We were also, have sent out letters to all of the supervisors requesting a meeting from them, with them, preferably an onsite visit if that's possible. We would also like to extend that to any of the planning commissioners. As you know, there's two more mine proposals right behind this one, as Mr. Cooney was referring to. There's a lot of relationship from one to the next, since they're all contiguous in terms of location. Our objective is not just to question the accuracy of the EIR. We think, feel it is seriously flawed, but also to question the legitimacy of the EIR process itself, as it's currently configured, especially for complicated projects like the Diamond Rock Mine. In effect, we're pitted against Mr. Troche with unlimited resources, who can hire, Mr. Heck can hire a Mr. Shapiro, to provide them all of this input and all of this great information. They can also provide it in a timely fashion, which is a problem for us. We're an all-volunteer organization. Our fundraising to this point is less than $5,000, and we still have some in the kitty, so we're fairly judicious in terms of the limited resources we do have. The observation is, is that the expertise provided by Mr. Heck and Mr. Shapiro collide with the, and interact with a transitory, overwhelmed, understaffed, planning staff, especially in the areas of expertise for a complicated project such as this. And it's our feeling that what this results in is that the staff almost has to accept the validity of the informations that provided in that EIR. And in effect, becomes an advocate of that EIR, rather than an advocate that's trying to glean, okay, what is facts and what is fiction in this particular document. We don't believe the EIR is correct, has many quantitative errors in it. It defies the history of the valley. The people that have lived there have hundreds of years of experience. We know where the water table is. We know how the river runs. We know how the bank looks. And we would be delighted to pass that information on in a personal basis to all of you. With that, some of our residents are going to be in speaker slips. I don't know what they're going to address specifically, but I wanted to at least bring you up to date as to what we are doing as a direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gorilla, followed by Tristan Zan. Oh, excuse me.
I am Jo-Lane Gorilla, and I'm a resident of Cuyama. We live near Vinicopa, near the site. I would like to defer my time to San Luis Obispo Keepers, and because I essentially agree with Gene. The EIR is flawed, ambiguous, and it has disregarded vocabulary. In essence, that's what I would say. Thank you so much.
Okay. Tristan Zannan, followed by Mr. Supervisor Bennett.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here basically to talk about, there was a number of issues that were brought up by the staff as having to do with the questions we asked. There was five, I think, they put up, and three of them were, let's see, we had the water, the stream channel, and the cumulative, yeah, this is it, here we go, the project-related water use. Well, taking a look at the EIR, it simply, it states that there's two uses for the water that they're going to have. One is to rinse the aggregate, the other is for dust suppression. Now, the dust suppression alone, it says that it is 100% evaporation, that they don't, they don't recycle any of this, nothing comes back to the aquifer, this is a debit. And just the dust suppression alone equals six and a half acre-feet per year. And the EIR, the latest staff report in the EIR states that on the average year, the mine will use a total of six acre-feet. So this is just the dust suppression. The majority of the water is going to be used in the aggregate washing. It says in the EIR, this is nothing that we've come up with, 207 gallons of water per ton. That's incredible. That's by far the largest user in that side of the valley. That equals 207 gallons of water times 750,000 tons on a peak year, 476 acre-feet. The county guidelines states 31 acre-feet as the most for a new project. Now, they've claimed three credits. There's three credits on here. One is the historical use credit. They're giving credit for the alfalfa that was formerly farmed there, and that is 45 acre-feet. They're getting credit for the recharge, that is, all the rainfall that falls on their area and goes back into the ground. They've already, in the original EIR, they stated that the annual rainfall was 12 inches a year, when in fact, it's six to eight inches, and it was stated in a previous section of that EIR. So it sort of shows fixing data to draw your own conclusions. And the final credit that they're given is they're claiming, without any real data to support it, that they're going to recycle 74% of the water. 74% of the water. So you add all these together, and you're looking at 400.4 acre-feet of credits. So you take the total, which was 476, because they're not going to get any recycling off of the dust suppression. They've stated that that's 100% evaporation, lost. So you minus 476, minus 400, you're 82 acre-feet per year, 2.6 times the county guidelines. Now, I don't know if guidelines are just suggestions or rules, but this is unbelievable. And this doesn't even take into account the extra four and a half acre-feet that they get from the moisture in the material taken out of the pit. They're giving credit for the moisture in the ground below their feet, but they're not giving, they're not getting any debit for the material taken out. It was just ignored. And I don't know if that's common in, you know, if that's, if it's just ignored. But also, you know, another example, the evaporation rate is given from Rose Valley, which is another 15 feet higher, 1,500 feet higher, excuse me, and not, it's in a mountain. It's on the top of a mountain. So their evaporation rate has been lowered, when in fact, the normal evaporation rate would be more something along the lines of the Sima Station in Cuyama Valley, which will be a higher rate. So, I'm sorry, I've already taken up my time. The other issue is obviously the head-cutting. That is extreme. We've noticed, GPS, they tried to say, okay, we're taking a look at GPS as our background, when in fact, GPS was very small, very low-key until not even two or three years ago, when they finally dug a giant pit last year. And we have photos of before and after from 2007 and 2008. And we saw head-cutting a quarter-mile up from the new pit, that went from four feet to 10 feet, after a very mild winter. We didn't have any major storms this year. So that, and we have photo documentation of this. So this is more indicative of what's going to happen if you put a 90-foot, 90-acre pit in the ground. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Bennett, followed by Babak Nafesi.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, thank you. Since we met last year, there's been a bridge damage on Highway 33. So Highway 33 is less safe for truck traffic today than it was a year ago. So it's even more important for me to speak of the importance of Condition 34, as it is now written for you. I very much appreciate the significant improvements in Condition 34 since we met last year. And I just want to end my comments by speaking strongly of the importance of keeping Condition 34 in today and for as long as the Troche Mine operates. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nafesi, followed by Gordon Hensley.
Good morning. Excuse me. My name is Babak Nafesi. I'm an attorney. I've been working with the folks in Cuyama Valley now for more than a year. And I will just touch on a few issues, because obviously, the time is short. First, I wanted to mention that your board's refusal to take the letter in from the San Luis Obispo Coast Keeper. That may be your policy, but it's inconsistent with case law interpreting sequels requirements. So I would suggest that you reconsider that, because that's an illegal policy. What the staff has not done is seriously take into account the EIR and the staff, the serious quality of life impacts that this mine, along with the other mines in line, will cause. The justifications provided for not reaching, or revising the conclusion that the impact would be significant, don't really pass the straight look test. The noise, the vibration, the dust, the number of trucks going by, the industrial character of this mine, along with the other ones proposed for the site, are inconsistent with the rural quality of life that the folks in Vinicopa have experienced so far. The Richards Holding Mine, staff, the consultant's incorrect when he stated unequivocally that sequels very clear that you need not consider any projects that came after the NOP. The guidelines say ordinarily, the biological baseline is at the time of the NOP. In this case, the staff had one year to look at the cumulative impact of the Richards Holding Mine from the last time your board had a meeting until now. One year. That would not have been unfair to the applicant, because there would have been plenty of time to get that analysis done and put it in front of you right now. The water use, staff is incorrect, and as is the EIR, about the significance of the threshold of significance. We don't believe that the staff was, we believe the staff was required, the EIR was required to look at the cumulative impact of using the amount of water for this project in addition to other projects and other uses in the valley. And it's incorrect to state that because this project doesn't meet the threshold of significance, that therefore, it so facto, there's no cumulative impact on groundwater. We also raised serious flaws in both methodology and methodology of looking at the impact on various plant and animal species and deciding whether those impacts should be significant or not. I submitted a letter on July 8th, in advance of your July 11th meeting, which was not discussed in the staff report. I detailed what I perceived to be the flaws. And I urge you to look at that. That was in a long time before your deadline. So I think that is incumbent of you, on you to consider that before you approve this project today. I urge you not to approve the project today, and look at some of these issues more critically. I see my time is up, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hensley, followed by Jennifer Lee.
Good afternoon, or morning, I guess we still are. Gordon Hensley, San Luis Obispo Coast Keeper. You've heard our attorney mention that your policy appears to conflict with state law. There is also an appearance in your process that I'm having difficulty understanding. We heard earlier that you don't consider cumulative impacts of known projects, even though you're fully aware of them, staff's aware of them. And now we hear that you can close the record to comments that were submitted to you. It appears as though you come to this meeting with your mind already made up. So I would ask that as you summarize today's actions, please explain to us the process that you go through to come to a decision, what we're doing here, and legal foundation for why you would exclude something from the record. To address our comments, the letter that I've submitted to you is almost identical to our July submittal, so it is already in the record. Dr. Loyasika's concern is that he has used the same data that's provided in the EIR, and he was not able to reproduce their results regarding the hydrologic impacts. We pointed this out at a meeting with staff on February 27. They indicated to us that they had not read Dr. Loyasika's letter, they had done no analysis of it, and your staff report reflects that they still haven't read it, and there's been no further attention given to it. However, Dr. Loyasika's concerns are mirrored by the comments of the EPA. There are significant likely impacts if you move ahead with this project, in both the cumulative and the direct impacts. We urge that you not certify the EIR, and that you not approve the conditional use permit or the reclamation plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jennifer Lee, followed by Jeff Kuiper.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Lee. I live in Santa Barbara County, in the Vinicopa area. I'm a certified public accountant, and I lived in Santa Barbara County for 23 years. I respectfully request that the Santa Barbara Planning Commission and the Santa Barbara County Planning and Development Department address the cumulative and adverse effects multiple aggregate mining operations will have on Cuyama Valley's watershed and air quality. At this time, the permitting process has been initiated for three mines. All three mines plan to operate in close proximity in the Cuyama, next to State Highway 33, six miles south of Highway 166 in Santa Barbara County. For 30 years, GPS River Rock Products has been extracting sand and gravel aggregate from the Cuyama River. They now want to expand their operations to extract 500,000 cubic yards of aggregate annually. And as you are aware, Diamond Rock Mine is applied for a new permit to extract up to 750,000 cubic yards of material annually, immediately upstream from the GPS extraction site. Also, another aggregate mining operation, Richards Holding Company, is applied to extract sand and gravel just downstream from the GPS mine pit. Prior to 2007, GPS was a relatively small mine, operating with an historic conditional use permit. small mine, operating with an historic conditional use permit issued by Santa Barbara County. They have never been issued a Section 404 permit under the Federal Clean Water Act. Pursuant to Section 404 of the Clean Water Act, they are required to obtain a permit from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to discharge dredge or fill material into waters of the United States. In January 2005, they were cited for failure to obtain their Section 404 permit before discharging material into the Cuyama River. In January 2007, GPS expanded its operations without completing the environmental review process required by SEQA, the California Environmental Quality Act. The GPS mine is currently under investigation by the Environmental Protection Agency. Historical information from a time when GPS River Rock Products' extraction operations were significantly smaller has been used extensively throughout the Diamond Rock Environmental Impact Report. I am concerned that historical operating data from GPS provides limited and insufficient information to support the proposed Diamond Rock Mine operations, or even expansion of its own GPS's operations. If Diamond Rock Mine is permitted using GPS's minimal data, and Diamond Rock's Environmental Impact Report is used to support GPS River Rock Products' expansion, how can the cumulative effects of both mines be justified in the permitting process? Diamond Rock, GPS, and Richards Holding Company mines all plan to operate in the Cuyama River, which feeds the Cuyama Water Basin. Protection of Cuyama Valley's air and water resources is vital to sustaining the agricultural industry and investment interests of residents and property owners in the valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kuiper, I understand you have visuals. You'll still be working within our three-minute type threshold. All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, unlike last year, I only have three photos this time, so we'll be quick. Chairman Jackson and honorable members of the commission, I'm Jeff Kuiper, the executive director of Los Padres Forest Watch. We're a nonprofit organization working to protect the Los Padres National Forest, and we're also an active participant with the Stop the Trucks Coalition based out of Ojai. One year ago, when this project was first considered for approval, we were all here in this room, another meeting followed in July, and here we are a year later, and a lot has been happening behind the scenes. We've organized even more concerned residents with issues on this mine and others down the pipeline. We've had discussions with the county and other agencies. We've had extensive negotiations with the project applicant, and we even came to an agreement with the project applicant, and we tried to get the county on board as well, but we just couldn't quite get there. We've continued to express grave concerns about turning Highway 33, a narrow-winding two-lane road through the heart of the Los Padres National Forest, into an industrial trucking route. We've expressed concerns about impacts to forest recreation, scenic values, public safety, noise, and air quality. We've presented statistics on the frequency of gravel truck accidents on the highway, and we've spent the last year working diligently with all parties involved to address these issues. And today, we're here, in greatly reduced numbers, to say that these issues with respect to the forest in Ojai have been successfully addressed by applicant and county staff, almost. And that's where you come in today. Revised Condition 34 now bans all truck traffic, without exception and without condition, south on Highway 33 through the forest in Ojai. This is good, because in February, an entire lane of Highway 33 collapsed into the Matilla River. This is an article from the Ojai Valley News, and I don't have any way of controlling, but if you can, here's some photos shortly after the collapse, showing some emergency work done. And you can see the photo in the bottom right-hand quarter shows severe undercutting from the creek underneath the highway. Next, please. And here's what it looks like today, and there's the red line towards the bottom of the photo that shows where the actual southbound lane used to stand. It's no longer there. So with revised Condition 34, we're 99% there, and today, I'm here to request that your commission fill in the remaining gap, that final 1%, with respect to these trucking issues. Today, your commission will consider certifying the EIR, and here's where the almost comes in. We ask that if you do certify the EIR, then you exclude from your certification that portion of the EIR that addresses truck traffic through the forest in Ojai. And this is important for two quick reasons. Number one, since truck traffic is no longer going through Ojai, then certification of these parts of the EIR are no longer necessary. And number two, we're concerned that if this part of the EIR is certified, then the applicant can come back in the future and modify their permit to later send trucks south through Ojai, and then we're going to have to go through this process all over again. We'll have to present evidence to reopen the EIR based on new information. We'll have to present info on Highway 33 truck safety study that we had prepared last year. We'd have to appeal today's certification to the Board of Supervisors. So we want to count this progress that we've made over the year as a victory, and end this issue once and for all. And so again, if today this commission certifies the EIR, please exclude from your certification that portion of the EIR that addresses truck traffic through the forest and Ojai. Again, we'd like to thank staff and the applicant for recognizing the inherent dangers of sending trucks south through the forest in Ojai. We stand with our neighbors in the Cuyama Valley. They live near the project site. They have intimate understanding and knowledge of these issues, and we hope that their various serious concerns are addressed in similar fashion. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, that is the last speaker slip I have. I'll ask my colleagues' indulgence. I know that the applicant will probably have some rebuttal. The question is whether a break at this time would be needed, and I'm getting a nod, I'm getting a second nod, and I'm nodding. So we will take a five-minute break, at which time we will return for that portion of our process. Thank you very much. Go back on the record on Item 1, Diamond Rock Mine, and at this juncture, we are still in the public comment phase, and I will ask the applicant's representative. And we have some time pressure, so brevity is always appreciated.
Thank you very much, Chair. I will make it quick. Just a couple of comments. The technical expertise provided by myself and Mr. Shapiro being acknowledged by the opposition is always good. I wanted to make a couple of comments on the technical expertise of staff. The ORS consultant, engineers and geologists have reviewed all of this information. Santa Barbara County staff, Brian Bock, was one of the first people who came out on this project and reviewed this project until he left. And the State Office of Mine Reclamation has engineers and geologists who review the process a third time. So there is expertise throughout this process, not just those provided by the applicant. Next comment, the purpose of this hearing really is to focus on the information provided by OMR and the issues raised by Steve Rodriguez. Many of the issues brought up by the members of the public, we talked about in detail in May and again in July of last year. I'm going to provide a couple of short comments on some of those. First, with regarding to Richard Holding Company, that application was submitted a year ago when the hearing began, the EIR was final, I believe, the day of the hearing, but it's my understanding that application is not yet complete. It's very difficult to do any analysis on a project that's not complete because you don't know what the project is. So as Mr. Larson suggested, the analysis that we have done includes regional growth projections, or that ORS has done, the regional growth projections for traffic and for air include the growth that might be anticipated from a project like that. With respect to Commissioner Cooney's question on the letter from the University of California at Santa Barbara, that letter was submitted in May of last year, so it's been considered by the staff of the county and the staff of the state. Mr. Lokega presents a different method of analyzing the impacts on the river. The experts who've done the analysis and reviewed the analysis have done it in a different manner, but they're all confident that the analysis is appropriate. And with respect to some of the comments on water, the Santa Barbara thresholds that we used are the Santa Barbara thresholds, and that analysis was also reviewed in detail. I did hear a comment about some of the current effects of GPS being different than what's characterized. We've taken a close look at the GPS operations in that river over the 30 years it's been there. At the same time, there are further conditions in the project that require very clear monitoring of the topography and surveying and gathering survey data of that riverbank, and those will include action items. So that if there does turn out that something is different from what's happened at GPS, we'll know about it, we'll predict it, the county will have a chance to act on it. These operations can change on an annual basis. So the analysis shows that we don't expect it, but if something does happen, we have monitoring and evaluating and surveying programs in place, all gathering data which is not available now and hasn't been, but will be as we move forward. Lastly, on the issue of the road collapse in Highway 33, Highway 33 is a rural highway. It connects the Cuyama Valley to Ventura County. It is the only connector. It goes through a mountain, so it's periodically closed by landslides and by erosion from a creek. The incident that we've seen the pictures of was not created by truck traffic or anything else. It was created by the creek eroding into the 33. Caltrans understands that is a difficult road to work. They had it open the next day, allowing gravel trucks. It's still open, allowing gravel, and they'll fix it to the standard that Caltrans wants that road to operate at. And Caltrans has reviewed our EIR and provided a separate study last year that says Highway 33 is adequate. So that collapse is not any new information that even if we were shipping on 33 should impact what the standard of the EIR, the analysis. And lastly, Kerry Shapiro, who is an attorney for the applicant, would like to just make a couple of very quick comments on partial certification, and then we're all done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As John said, my name is Kerry Shapiro with the firm of Jeffrey Engels, Butler &amp; Marmo. I represent the Trosch family, and I'm going to be brief on the one issue which was requested by the representative from Forest Watch, which was the request that the EIR be partially certified to not address certain impacts going south on 33. Bottom line, the Trosch family is opposed to any type of partial certification. We think that the EIR is adequate under SEQA in its entirety, and should therefore be certified in its entirety. We say that because as Mr. Heck just indicated, the information presented about the collapse of the road is not the type of significant new information under SEQA that would in any way impugn the integrity of the EIR, and therefore does not create the necessity for such a partial certification. Now, we recognize that certification in part can be legal under SEQA. There's no bar to it, but it's not provided anywhere under SEQA, and in fact, it's a highly unusual process. I've worked on EIRs for 20 years, and I've never participated in an EIR that was partially certified. So you would be creating an element of unknown, an element of uncertainty as to what impacts in the EIR were actually analyzed, what the project is that would actually be analyzed. And I think that kind of uncertainty would actually end up with the opposite effect of what this commission wants and what the party actually was requesting. You would be creating more risk to the EIR by partially certifying than you would by certifying the entire EIR. It's also worth mentioning that if in the future any, the Trosches would seek to amend Condition 34, that by the express language in the condition, it requires another public process. So the public would of course have an opportunity to address any impacts that they perceive would be created by sending trucks down 33 at that time. So with that, thank you very much.
Okay. Any questions for the gentlemen?
Mr. Shapiro, could I just ask one question? With regard to your stated preference to have the entire EIR certified, is the opposite not also true that if we disagreed with your conclusion that this recent event at Highway 33 required further environmental review, and therefore, we weren't in a position to certify that portion, you're suggesting that we not certify any of the EIR at this time, and then go forward until we are prepared to do the entire EIR as a group?
Well, that's a question that I'm not sure where we would favor either of the alternatives, either a delay in certification of the EIR, or a partial certification of the EIR. I understand, given a choice between the two, certainly, we would not prefer that the EIR process be delayed any more than it already has, although we have consulted with your staff and the other county council. We don't believe that this information addresses project-related impacts and impunes the integrity of the document, also remembering that with Condition 34, there are no trucks going down south. So I'm not sure how the commission would feel that this information would create vulnerability to the document. But certainly, a delay in the project would be the worst possible outcome at this point.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other commissioner questions? All right, I'm going to close public comment at this time and bring it back to the commission for any further commissioner questions. Commissioner Blau.
Yeah, I'd just like to hear comments from the staff regarding the testimony we heard, particularly Mr. Allen on the issue of the letter that we're not putting in the record.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, first, what I'm hearing is that the information in the letter is in the record, so I don't believe there's a concern there. Second, in general, I don't have a concern with that particular letter not being admitted in the record. There will be an opportunity for, well, first, the information is in the record. Second, I understand that Commissioner Cooney may raise any specific issues that are before. And in general, I don't have a concern at this juncture with that issue.
Okay. All right. Any other, oh, I'm sorry, I cut you off before you can answer.
I don't have anything in particular. Unless you have questions, of course, I'll try to answer them.
Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would it be appropriate not to ask about the water problems that somebody brought up from the speakers on the opposite side?
If you don't, I'm gonna.
All right. Mr. Kaiser, would you like to respond to that concerning the usage of water? It was estimated that, let's see, they use, at peak time, 750 tons, which equates to about, after the 75% recharge, that there would be about 600 acre-feet of water or something used. Could you respond to that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Valencia, thank you. We had a conversation during the break about the water analysis, and there were some comments made about the staff being short on this expertise in mining projects and maybe taking the applicant's information and running with it. We did actually reevaluate the water use information that was provided by the applicant, and substantially increased that in the course of our evaluation. First, from 43 acre-feet per year to 55 acre-feet per year, and up to 77 acre-feet per year, I think, at peak production. With respect to the specific gallons per day and acre-feet per year, I think I'd turn it over to John Larson for specifics, but I did want to address that point.
Mr. Chairman, I think we had a pretty thorough discussion of this issue at your hearing last year. I won't try to repeat everything that we went over there. The water consumption issue is discussed at some length in the EIR. The conclusion is presented in Table 3 dot 3 dash 2. The procedure that was used is straight out of the county's thresholds and guidelines manual. It is a fairly involved procedure that involves a whole series of forms to be filled out. It is unique for the Cuyama Valley, being one of the watersheds in Santa Barbara County that is recognized as being in an overdraft condition. The precise reason for the existence of this unique approach is to allow an assessment of cumulative impacts of water use. So following that procedure, according to the county's thresholds and guidelines manual, we are addressing cumulative impacts. We went through the arithmetic. It's presented in the environmental impact report. The net result is this project, under its average production conditions at 500,000 tons a year, would use a total of a little over six acre-feet per year, and during the peak production year, at 750,000 tons a year, that number would go up to about 28 acre-feet.
Can we stop right there, Mr. Chair? Can we stop? Excuse me, something wrong with the arithmetic. There's 43,500 gallons roughly of water in an acre foot. There's 43,500 gallons roughly of water in an acre foot. And if you're using, is that not right?
Uh, there's 43,500.
I'm sorry, 350. I was thinking of.
There you go. You gotta multiply times seven and a half.
350, yeah, I was thinking of.
Square feet, or square feet in an acre.
Yeah. All right. Three hu, it's 350,000 gallons roughly per.
That's about right.
Per acre foot. And so they're using, what, one acre foot, uh? Okay, so they're using approximately at peak, let's, let's talk about peak right now, 522, so 350. They're using about one and three quarters acre feet per day. And 75% of that is, is recycled. And so that equates to about 83, 83,000 gallons of water per day, which is about, what, 5840? It's about 20% of an acre foot or something. So times 313, so you're into 60-some acre feet that they use a year. Is that about right where you came in?
77 was the number that we presented, yes.
Okay.
And then that's their total consumption. There are a couple of credits that go back to it to reduce that number, again, following the county's procedures. There's a recharge adjustment and adjustment related to the fact that they're displacing some agricultural fields that consume water. And once those are applied, that total number 77 drops down to about 28.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Cooney.
Well, I'm going back to Mr. Allen. The issue of partial certification, have you had a chance to consider that, Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Cooney, members of the commission, yes, we have considered in our office. Partial certification is, I believe, a legal mechanism. Like Mr. Shapiro, we have not seen it occur. I have not seen any case law on it. And I understand Mr. Shapiro and the applicant's concern that in venturing into a, you know, somewhat novel mechanism, there may be unintended consequences that might result. But the decision is ultimately up to your commission.
Further questions?
With respect to the basic issue of whether this road collapse is new information of significant enough extent that we should consider further environmental review or provide a basis for not certifying that portion of the EIR? Do you, Mr. Kaiser or Mr. Larson, have any reaction?
John might have a more technical one. Mine, mine has to do with my capacity with the county in terms of setting precedent. You know, things are fairly complicated already when, when these discretionary cases come in the door and we have choices to make in terms of CEQA compliance. And sometimes we'll, we'll tag on to an EIR and do an addendum or something like that. In some cases, we'll do a negative declaration and that opens the door for what is appropriate and terms of mitigation and so on. In a case like this, we'll do an EIR and sometimes several versions until we agree that it's adequate. We're talking now about a potential new possibility of partial EIR certification. And after five years and the planning process and I don't know how much money the applicant spent at our direction to prepare what we thought was going to be inadequate EIR, I don't think it's good planning or a good precedent to start suggesting partial EIR certifications. And that opens the door, of course, and begs the question for applicants in the future that may just want to prepare a partial EIR to begin with because of an area that might be controversial or maybe even a partial negative declaration. And I don't see that there's a legal need to do that in this case, and I think it sets a dangerous precedent from, from my standpoint.
Mr. Larson, did you want to weigh in further or that?
Mr. Rodriguez wants to weigh in before me.
Oh, okay.
I, I guess I would just like to add, the EIR in its evaluation of potential traffic impacts identified an impact that would result because of project-related traffic through Ojai Valley in relation to a very stringent traffic threshold that has been adopted by the county. On Highway 33 through the Ojai area, if you add one peak hour trip, that's a significant impact. That's a very stringent threshold. To, to mitigate that impact, the EIR, and at one time, the conditional use permit had a condition that said Diamond Rock cannot send project-related trips through the Ojai Valley during the peak hour. Because of the changes to Condition 34, that condition has been removed. It's no longer part of the conditional use permit. So if the project were to come back in the future or request to send projects through the Ojai Valley, the record is clear, there's a potential impact. The conditional use permit does not address that impact any longer. We're going to have to do some sort of subsequent environmental review later in the process. And Condition 34 still requires that we notify Ojai and Ventura that the county of Santa Barbara is considering a change to the project that will have to address this traffic impact in Ojai. I, I think the, the purpose has been served. There's another method to address this concern about future changes to the project and subsequent environmental review.
Okay. I'll give you the chance, if you've got a comment to add on, Mr. Larson.
I agree with both staff comments. The specific question of whether or not the recent collapse on the section of State Route 33 would represent new information that would change the analysis, I certainly don't think it would. We've had unfortunate collapses on other sections of highway, the most notable one in recent memory is along 166. I suppose the extent to which that particular event might be considered is, that might ultimately be considered an emergency event that would trigger the need for aggregate material for repairs that would lead to a, a short-term peak production from a facility like this. But since Diamond Rock is not there and available now to supply aggregate for that particular repair, it doesn't really enter into it. But no, the answer is, I, I don't think that event, had we known of it at the time we were writing the EIR, I don't see that that would have changed any conclusions or had any effect on the outcome. The R has a lot of information about traffic analysis and a lot of descriptive information and documentation along State Route 33 on behalf of staff and consultants that do a lot of work on projects around. Like Mr. Rodriguez said, you hate to lose access to that information. So I would prefer that you not partially certify.
Any additional commissioner questions at this time for staff?
I, I have one because, as it relates to consideration if a, I don't see how, the nexus for this project of whether or not a competitor or an pre-existing entity has failed to get its ACE discharge permit. I was, I was trying to understand the relevance of that. I don't think I can make that nexus. But I'd also, just as a sidelight to what you just discussed, there have been numerous presentations of collapses on 33. And as, to the best of my understanding, if the road is compromised, it has been repaired and the presumption is that your, the report was based on a non-compromised throughway. I think that's all. And, and then lastly, to the water issue, someone from the audience raised challenges to, to the point, it sounds to me as if your answer is that you are asserting and standing with the, the, the figures within the report. And I think that's what I'm hearing. Am I correct?
Okay, I have no further questions and I see no further lights. Commissioner Blau, this is a 5th District project. Would you like to take the lead in how we proceed?
Yeah, I'd like to hear from my fellow commissioners. First thing, I'll make my motion.
Okay. Who wants to start? Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, we've been going over this now for approximately a couple of years, I think. Read a lot of documents, listened to all the people coming in on that big bus from, couple of buses from Ojai, listened to all their concerns. And the major thrust of the whole thing was not having any trucks going through Ojai. And it seems like that has been mitigated. The major concern was no trucks through Ojai. And there's an agreement now, these folks just want to get on with it. All right, we're not going to send any trucks through Ojai. That seems to be the thrust, was the thrust of the thing now. Now, it seems like we're into a little nitpicking area of finding little spots here and there of what doesn't agree with the, the document, what, what needs to be modified and so on. And there isn't a document that we produced that you couldn't nitpick at. I mean, everything, nothing is perfect. Everything could be made a little better. At this particular point, my concern was one of the things that they brought up, but I had the wrong conversion figure for the use of water. And it seems like it's less than 75 acre feet per year. I don't see a major problem in the project. I, I think it's a good project. It's something that we need. It's a shame that people from, from Santa Barbara and some of these areas might have to go to Palmdale to get aggregate, you know, when it could have come from a shorter distance there. But understanding and respecting the wishes of the people of Ojai, their county supervisor in Ventura came down and his major concern was not all of the other environmental concerns, which are minor, but of the use of Highway 33 and keeping the trucks out of Ojai. And just, we want to get on with the project, so I don't see any, I think that the major concern has been mitigated and I'm ready to go forward with your motion, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Cooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I recognize that Commissioner Valencia is inclined to look at the big picture and, and I'd like to give my view of the big picture first before talking about the specifics of this project. I, I do think the entire area is going to be under regular scrutiny by the County Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, not only because of this project, but this project will be an important ingredient of analysis of the degradation of the environment in the Kiama Valley. It perhaps is enough by itself to warrant denial of this conditional use permit. But in the big picture, there is a lack of support for allegations of environmental damage, which has not been mitigated. The environmental impact report concedes that air quality emissions will be exceeded and therefore, staff has prepared for us a specific finding of overriding consideration. It's very, very difficult for me to agree that we should ever find an overriding consideration for degradation of air quality. But I did visit that beautiful area personally. The only time in my life I've ever been there, I observed the existing mine just downstream. It not only wasn't particularly noisy, but it was very difficult with the, the personal observation of the wind conditions and, and the distance from other habitation to form the opinion that, that the air quality limitations that we applied to that project, while appropriate in a more urban setting, probably could be exceeded if the need was, was great enough. And where I come down on this project is that I do think we're compromising the environmental quality and the quality of life in the Kiama Valley. And I'm focused there because the applicant has, in my opinion wisely, been aggressive in terms of resolving the problems of sending the truck traffic south along Highway 33 through the Ojai Valley. But there is still a very important community left behind that's going to bear the brunt. And our environment in that area is also going to take the hit so the rest of us can continue to build our roads and our buildings, not only in the rest of Santa Barbara County, but in surrounding counties as well. It is a business. It's obviously a profitable business because others are seeking to get into it. And at some point, I think we have to say we have gone too far with the damage to the Kiama Valley to allow more mines to occur, no matter how great the need. And we'll have to look for other sources elsewhere, perhaps in other counties. But I, on the basis of the evidence that's been accumulated to date and presented to this commission over the last year, I don't believe the environmental damage is proven to be sufficient to overcome the, the appropriateness and caretaken by the applicant with this project. So I'm going to vote in favor of this particular application with the clear warning to future applicants that at least I am going to look very skeptically on the damage to not only the environment, but also to the quality of life in the Kiama Valley.
Okay. And for myself, I got a real education watching this tape. I used to live in Claremont, right next to the Upland Claremont facility, and know the noise factors. And I live in Sauvage, not far from a, a similar plant. This is an inherently intrusive process. It's also an inherently vital process. And I am, I am moved, along with Commissioner Cooney, to cast a jaundiced eye toward the future. But if we look at the significant amount of effort made to attempt to address the concerns on the part of the applicant, recognizing a significant need, recognizing, as I do and have come to learn in my short tenure on this committee, that the Kiama Valley is bearing burdens at this time. And for us to fail to be cognizant of that is incorrect. I still am moved by the same calculus that Commissioner Cooney arrived at just before me, which is that I will support this project, again, because of the overriding, what I feel due diligence on the part of an applicant to facilitate a process as gently and as recognizing it as an inherently intrusive production, to do the best they can. And so, Commissioner Blau, I will be moving to support the staff's recommendations if you, if you make such a motion.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. I gotta be honest with you, I wasn't really moved all that much by the testimony from the people from Ojai. I'm more moved by the testimony from the people at Kiama, to tell you the truth, who I think we represent. I actually think it's kind of disingenuous that Ojai would not allow traffic to go through there and yet they'll allow trucks to go through and take another, another 50 miles to deliver the gravel. And so they actually have more, I think, missions down there than, than, than what they're claiming this is going to entail. That being said, the reality is, the rock is where the rock is. I mean, if there are other places to get it and it didn't impact the people in Kiama, I'd be a lot happier. But unfortunately, that's where the rock is. I think the staff and the applicant have done everything possible to mitigate any damage that may occur to the environment or the quality of life. So I am prepared to go ahead and make the motion to, to support it. One comment on Highway 33, it's not here today that I can grab my hands on, but the reality is, is Caltrans and the Highway Patrol is the entity that makes the determination whether it's safe for anybody to travel along that road. And I'm not sure that it's necessarily that we need to take a look at that environmental review document when they are the experts that we would roll, roll up on anyway. As I understand it, even with the collapse, Highway Patrol is still allowing truck traffic to go through there. So they apparently feel as. to go through there, so they apparently feel as, it is a safe movement. However, personally, having been a dispatcher for a trucking company many, many years ago, and having a boss that wouldn't even allow trucks to go across Highway 154, from Santa Barbara to Santa Maria, because he didn't think it was safe, I don't think that road is particularly safe either for trucks, wouldn't drive my motor home there. But nonetheless, that, since it's not going to happen, it's no longer a concern, so I don't have any problems. So I'm prepared to go forward and make a motion, the staff's recommendations, although we need to look at Slide 16 because the staff recommendation on that slide is slightly different than what's in our staff report in the binder, doesn't have item number four. So my motion is to approve with the conditions that you see on the screen before you now, one through four.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any additional discussion at this time? Commissioner Cooney.
Mr. Chair, just one comment about the Environmental Impact Report. We are asked to certify the Environmental Impact Report, and I'll be supporting that part of the motion as well, even though I think there's a valid argument that partial certification would be beneficial to those who believe that the, the issue of traffic through the forest into Ojai is the major concern here. I hope it doesn't require a separate appeal, and I hope it doesn't create additional vulnerability for the project if it is questioned in court, but it is what it is. I, I agree that the road is going to continue to fail, that is something the Environmental Impact Report took into account in general, and so I don't think partial certification is appropriate here.
Okay, that being the case, we have a motion on the floor with a second, and we are ready for a roll call. Ms. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Blau?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Yes.
Motion passes four to zero.
Okay, at this time, we'll, we need time for some setup. We'll take five minutes, five minutes to set up for the next item. Come back on the record, and at this juncture, I will announce that Commissioner Cooney will be leaving us at this point, and we will continue on with the three members. We are on standard agenda item number two. Latishi, would you like to read that into the record, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of Claudia Sagona, agent for applicants OSR Enterprises, Inc., NRG Enterprises, L.P., and OSR Ranch, L.P., to consider 06 RZN-5, application filed July 14, 2006, 06 TPM-19, application filed on July 14, 2006, 06 DVP-9, application filed on July 14, 2006, 06 CUP-43, application filed on July 14, 2006, and to accept the addendum to Environmental Impact Report 04 EIR-08 pursuant to the state guidelines for implementation of SEQA.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, I'll ask my colleagues if they have any ex parte or site visits to disclose at this time. Mr. Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I visited the site and drove around a couple, about five miles up Betaravia Road and on Rosemary and reviewed the site, and I spoke to Susan Ellidge, she invited me for a tour, which I declined, because I make these sites on my own. And I, about two years ago, I guess, maybe three years ago, I had a, a discussion about this project, and I went out to see the site with Mr. Rice.
Okay, Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I'm familiar with the site, drive by it quite frequently, and I did talk to Ms. Ellidge, and also declined her very nice invitation to tour the site, I'm pretty familiar with it, so thanks.
Okay, for myself, I was taking on an extraordinary tour of the fourth district when I signed on for this gig, and we drove past this site and had a discussion with Supervisor Gray on the concept of coolers. I also had a conversation, telephone conversation with Ms. Ellidge, gratefully, and I believe everything that we discussed in that conversation will be promulgated in this process. So, at this time, Mr. Edie, welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Jackson. Before I begin staff's presentation, I would like to draw the commission's attention to the memorandum, which we have passed out to you dated today. Couple small fixes on the addendum, just minor word errors that needed to be cleaned up. The other major condition change would be, Transportation gave us an updated condition letter which introduced a shared cost system for the upgrade to Betaravia Road. And then, an issue that we'll be delving into a little bit deeper in the staff presentation is the suggested change to condition number three of the conditional use permit. Basically, that's to ensure the project complies with existing LUDC standards, and the applicant objected to the condition, and staff is willing to make some changes about the timing of the monitoring, but we'll discuss that later on in the presentation. So today, the project we're presenting to you is the OSR Rice Cooler Project. It is located in the Santa Maria Valley, approximately one mile east of the city of Santa Maria and Highway 101 at the intersection of Betaravia and Rosemary Road. The site consists of one legal parcel, which is approximately 244 acres. In this aerial view of the project site, you can see that the subject parcel is primarily used for agricultural cultivation, with the exception of five active oil wells and one natural gas well, and some oil storage tanks, tanks located central to the site. Transitioning to site photos, this photo was taken facing east and shows the frontage of the site along Betaravia Road. This photo shows the agricultural fields which occupy the majority of the site, with one of the active oil wells in the background. This is the proximate area of the site where the cooling facility will be developed. And this photo taking facing north shows the site's frontage on Rosemary Road. And this area of the site which will be occupied by the proposed detention basins. And finally, this is the northern portion of the site, which will remain in agricultural To summarize the project, as it involves four major planning applications, this basically includes a rezone, a tentative parcel map, a development plan, and a conditional use Now, the requested rezone will maintain the current Ag2 Zone District designation that's currently on the site. Ultimately, the rezone will reduce the minimum parcel size from 100 acres to 40 acres, so in effect, there will be no change in the currently allowed land uses. The only substantive result would be that ultimately, the project site could be subdivided to a maximum of six lots versus two under the current zoning. So you'd have a net increase of four residentially developable lots. In this graphic, as it illustrated, you can see that the Santa Maria Valley, in this area of the project site, is already predominantly zoned Ag240, with just the project site that we're looking at today and a couple of remnant parcels west that are still zoned Ag2100. As a side note, those remnant parcels located west of the site aren't even 100 acres right now, so in effect, they, they don't even meet the minimum parcel size that's in effect in the zoning as it is. So, this change from Ag240, or excuse me, from Ag2100 to Ag240 would certainly be consistent with the surrounding zoning that the county has in effect at this time. The tentative parcel map would subdivide the project into three legal parcels. As illustrated in this graphic, the existing property lines are denoted in blue, proposed property lines are denoted in red. Please note that the proposed agricultural cooling facility would be placed on parcel The requested development plan would allow the construction of a 27-acre produce cooling and processing facility, which would be constructed in phases over five to eight years. Phase one of this development would include the construction of cooling facilities, truck docks, office support buildings, and various accessory structures, and ultimately, this phase would result in a total structural development of approximately 102,686 square feet. Future phases would include an expansion of the cooling facilities and accessory structures, and the construction of a value-added processing facility, bringing the total structural development at full buildout of the facility to approximately 237,636 square feet of structures alone. In addition, the aforementioned structural development, there will be proposed site improvements, including paving, detention basins for stormwater and wastewater, landscaping, and the expansion of the existing public right-of-way. Here we can see a site plan of the entire facility with phase one structures identified with hash marks. The proposed office building will anchor the southwest corner of the property, the cooling and value-added facilities will be located central to the site, and the accessory structures will be located along the eastern edge of the facility. I'd also like to draw your attention to the fact that there are large landscape areas located between the facility and the adjacent public roads. This is a basic floor plan of the cooling facility and attached refrigeration docks, and this is a conceptual elevation of the same structure. This is your basic floor plan of the office building and conceptual elevation of the same structure. And finally, we get to the conditional use permit. This is required because the facility is going to accept off-premise agricultural products. As proposed, the facility could support an estimated processing need for 5,000 acres of surrounding agricultural land. Ultimately, to ensure that the project is consistent with LUDC standards for agricultural processing facilities, staff has added a condition number three to the CUP, which primarily focuses on the fact that the facility should predominantly process products that are grown within 25 miles of the boundaries of the county. Now, this is the condition as it currently reads in the staff report, and again, as I mentioned before the presentation started, this is a, a condition which the applicant is opposed to, primarily based on the fact that the condition as it reads now could potentially interfere with the standard operating procedure of the cooling facility. In other words, if they felt the need to accept some products on a limited basis outside of this 25-mile boundary, how long would it take planning and development to give the necessary approval, and would that interfere with how quickly they needed to import the product? After careful consideration, staff took that concern into consideration and drafted a recommended replacement condition, which in effect will ensure that the facility is still in conformance with this standard from the LUDC. However, there is a dramatic shift in how the monitoring would, would take place to ensure that. We go from the facility needing to get PND's permission first, to the facility submitting an annual report at the end of the calendar year documenting basically a percentage of where their agricultural products came from. And now, this condition is closely related to similar conditions that we already use on wineries, that require annual reports to document where grapes have been imported from. So, it's a similar condition that we've used in the past and seems to have worked well. Ultimately, the applicant has requested a condition which has similar wording, which would ensure the, the facility will conform with the applicable LUDC standards. However, there is no active monitoring component to the condition, so ultimately, PND more or less could not enforce the condition unless there was a zoning violation or a violation of the CUP condition reported to PND directly. The reason for this condition really relates to the new Ag Preserve rules, which were adopted by the board in September of 2007, one of those rules being Rule 2-2.1, A-1, which states that for a facility to exceed 50% of the total parcel area, that the board must deem that the facility is a significant benefit to the agricultural community and the public. It should be noted that the Agricultural Advisory Committee did review this project and did recommend that the board consider this project a significant benefit as required. Staff basically feels that it's important to preserve condition three with some monitoring component to ensure that the project is consistent with this finding, that it's a significant benefit to the agricultural community here in the county. Ultimately, transitioning to environmental issues, the proposed project will have significant and unmitigable impacts to agricultural resources, air quality, and long-term noise production. In addition, the project will have significant but mitigable impacts due to short-term noise production. Ultimately, these unmitigable Class 1 impacts were already disclosed in the EIR that was approved at the same time the board approved the revision to the uniform rules, and so these significant Class 1 and Class 2 impacts have already been disclosed, and the board has already issued the proper overriding statement of considerations in a prior document. And that is why we ultimately processed an addendum to that EIR for this project. In conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission recommend to the Board of Supervisors, as it is the Board of Supervisors who must ultimately make the decision as to whether or not to approve this project, that the board adopt the required findings for the proposed project, specify an Attachment A, including SEQA findings, approve the addendum to 04 EIR-08, and approve the project subject to the conditions included in Attachment C of the staff report.
Okay, thank you very much. At this juncture, are there any commissioner questions for staff with regard to the report? Commissioner Blau?
Yeah, I'm not sure I have a copy of the condition that the applicant is proposing for, do I have that?
The condition is up on the screen right now. If you want, I can...
Yeah, could you make me a printed copy of that just for fun?
Sure.
Thanks. And I have some questions about that condition, but I'd like to hear from the applicant first before I, because I might ask, I might ask the question to the applicant rather than the staff.
Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the 25-mile, is that just roughly Los Alamos to Arroyo Grande type thing to keep everything within there? What's the reason for that?
That is, Chairman Jackson and Commissioner Valencia, that's taken directly out of the LUDC standards. Ultimately, it's 25 miles from the boundaries of the county, so it could, like you said, probably extend to about Arroyo Grande, but it could also extend into Kern County and Ventura Counties as well.
The purpose of that is not to make these big manufacturing plants or processing plants, is that it, or what, or just to serve our county?
The purpose would, basically to ensure that a, a large processing facility wouldn't be built in the county to service agricultural land statewide.
For other regions, some other region, I see. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Edie, with regard to the oil wells that have been on the site, are you in possession of, to know that those have been addressed, closed off, wrapped up, and are appropriately dealt with at this point?
Chairman Jackson?
The non-active one, the ones that have been...
Correct. The, we, at the beginning of the processing of this project, we received a site assessment documenting what past oil wells had been abandoned on the site, and at that time, the assessment was that, you know, Unical, who was the prior owner of those wells, was actively working towards cleaning those sites up. Ultimately, we had a report done by our own petroleum planner, and she has confirmed that those sites have in fact been closed up and deemed clean.
Okay. The other question is, your report talked a lot about ammonia. What does one need to know to feel safe about ammonia on this project? And I, I'm not looking for a lengthy thing, but it's, it's a concern, so what should I know, with regard to how it's been addressed, to feel comfortable about?
Certainly. Chairman Jackson, staff received a, a site assessment produced by MRS, a company that frequently does these assessments for, basically a risk assessment on if there was an ammonia release, what potential risk does that pose to the surrounding community? And really, what the crux of that issue for this project is, how close do you have a sensitive receptor, be it a school or residential neighborhood, that sort of thing? This area of the Santa Maria Valley is predominantly a corporate farmed area. There are very few residences anywhere close to the site, so ultimately, the, and also the predominant wind direction would... the predominant wind direction would take anything further east where there are even fewer residences. So, ultimately, that risk assessment takes into effect of, if there's an ammonia release, how far does it pose a risk, and are there any sensitive receptors within that area? And ultimately, the report deemed that we are in the green zone, which in accordance with county standards means there's no significant risk.
Okay. The project itself is in excess of some target parameters. Can you speak to that just a little bit? As I understand it, the acreage site, or the parcel relative to the size of the structure is at odds a little bit, and how we, if you could describe that so I can get an understanding of how that is?
Chairman Jackson, when the Uniform, revision of the Uniform Rules was processed and the EIR was attached to that, ultimately, when you have a Class 1 significant impact that can't be mitigated, you still are asked to mitigate to the maximum extent feasible, even if that doesn't reduce it below a significant level. So ultimately, the original presentation for that mitigation was, well, these facilities shouldn't exceed 50% of the acreage of the site that they're placed on. However, the board felt that it was important to recognize the fact that if these facilities are going to provide enough of a benefit to, in this instance, 5,000 acres of the surrounding agricultural community, then it's appropriate for there to be an impact that's really just minimized to the parcel that the project's being put on itself. And so, while this project is exceeding that 50% target, there, you know, there is the outlet that the board can find it a significant benefit, and therefore, it's worth exceeding that 50%.
Okay. And inherently, I have learned in my brief tenure here, benefit is a loaded word. The calculus that has been presented on this, can you summarize just briefly what type of elements you think are components of that finding?
Well, ultimately, I think what's important to differentiate in this project, Chairman Jackson, is that in reading the addendum, the Class 1 impacts for the, impacts agricultural resources that were certified on the previous EIR, dealt with the raw loss of agricultural acreage. A separate impact that we evaluated with this project is the fact that you're going to have a 27-acre facility going onto a 40-acre parcel. In order to prove the map that goes along with this project, we had to evaluate whether or not that parcel was still going to be viable, given that it's going to be occupied by a 27-acre facility. Ultimately, according to the guidelines, it is still viable. So ultimately, I don't think you have a particularly important issue as far as exceeding that 50%, because you're still not going to result in a non-viable parcel. And I think that was really the concern that is the intent behind that requirement in the EIR, in the Uniform Rules.
All right. Well, I probably will have a few more questions later, but I think with my colleagues leave, this would be a good time to hear from the applicant. And good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Suzanne Elidge, and we are representing the Rice family in this application. We've got a brief presentation for you today, and I appreciate the questions that you've just asked of staff, and I think that our presentation will give you some additional information about those particular questions. We also have with us, available to you after our presentation, to answer any other questions you may have, our design team that's made up of Bob Corbett, who's the project architect, Brian Deal, who is the civil engineer, and Matt Melscow, who's the landscape architect. I'd like to introduce to you now Claudia Sagona, who is the senior planner from my office that's been working on this project for the last almost year. And I also want to publicly thank staff. This project has been, we originally applied for these applications in July of 2006, so they've been in process for quite a long time, and they got held up with the agricultural Uniform Rules adoption being delayed. But since the time that that was resolved and our project was deemed completed the first of the year, Mr. Edie has worked really efficiently to get us to you in a very short timeframe compared to other projects that we've worked on over the years. So I do want to thank staff very much for their hard work on this, and ask Claudia to now come up and provide you with our presentation. Thank you.
Okay. I am duty-bound to ask how long you estimate this portion will take?
Very brief. A few minutes. Nathan, if you could go to the next slide. We just wanted to give you a brief context. Oh. Is there, to advance that?
No.
No, oh, can you, if you could, it's, we've got animation. There we go. Just to give you some context in relation to the surrounding area, the subject site is centrally located within the Santa Maria Valley agricultural area and is literally surrounded by thousands of acres of cropland. And if you can proceed, and one more. We just wanted to emphasize, there we go, the zoning of the site is currently Ag 2100. We're seeking Ag 240 zoning, and this just illustrates in green the existing Ag 240 zoning, which is the predominant zoning in the area, which the cooler facility would be consistent with. And one more, this is an overview of the parcel map, but we can probably go through that quickly because Nathan's already showed you that. This is an illustration of the site plan, and if you click on the next couple, it just shows you that the area encompassing Phase 1, which is where most of the improvements will initially take place. And then, if you click again, Phase 2 consists of a second refrigerated cooler facility and some additional accessory structures. And then Phase 3 on the southern end is what we call the value-added component, and that's essentially a facility that further processes produce. It, you know, washes it, cuts it, packages it. A good example would be bagged lettuce, which, you know, it processes it for, to be more readily used by the consumers. So that's a potential future phase. You can go through that since you've already shown the building elevations. Just to give you a more visual image of the amount of landscaping and the open space that's proposed, there's quite a bit of landscaping along both road frontages and within the employee parking area and surrounding the office building. And then there's the landscape detention basin in the northwest corner of the parcel. You can quickly move through these since you've already shown some site photographs. One more, okay. With regard to the 40-acre parcel justification, because you may be wondering, why not just put the facility on the entire 244 acres? It really is essential that it be placed on its own individual parcel, and that's really a function of the financing for the project. It's really cost prohibitive for a single operator to finance the magnitude of this type of facility. And so, you've got a number of operators or investors coming together to finance this type of facility, which then therefore dictates that it be under separate ownership than the remaining area that's going to stay cropland. So that is the reasoning for the 40-acre parcel. And then with regard to, with regard to the rezone, again, as we illustrated in that earlier slide, the proposed Ag 240 zoning is consistent with the surrounding area. The 40-acre parcel size is viable and allowed by the Uniform Rules. It meets the minimum size for contracted land, and the rezone to Ag 240 would not affect the remaining ag operations or farming operations on the property. Nathan's mentioned to you the new Uniform Rule that in part was approved, in part in recognition of this project. Previously, the restriction was five acres. The new Uniform Rules took it to 30 acres. There is the caveat with regard to the 50% of the parcel size. And I just wanted to point out that the proposed parcel, or proposed facility at 27 acres actually represents only, represents only 16.5% of the total project area, but due to the necessity to place the facility on its own separate parcel, that it therefore then exceeds the 50%. But we believe that the benefits of the project are many. If you want to go to the next slide. Again, this, the facility would serve between 3,500 and 5,000 acres in the Santa Maria Valley and the surrounding area. The new building and this facility puts this type of use closer to the actual crops and acreage being served. Currently, the client, or the applicant, has two produce cooling facilities that are centralized in the city of Santa Maria, so this would consolidate those facilities and move them out to a more appropriate area, resulting in public benefits such as reduced truck traffic through the urban area, fewer land use conflicts within the city of Santa Maria, and again, shorter truck trips because you're placing the facility closer to the crops being served. The facility itself is really essential to the produce industry, and not only based on what the applicants told me, but doing my own research, the, it's essential to get field heat off of produce as quickly as possible. Doing so reduces post-harvest losses, which in my research can be 30 to 50% if you don't get it into a cooling facility as quickly as possible. The facility itself then increases the shelf life of the product, thereby providing greater economic stability to the ag community, to the growers. Because of the longer shelf life, there's increased, the marketability for the growers is greatly enhanced. They're not, you know, dictated by a short lifespan where they've got to release everything into the market immediately. They can release it at a more steady pace over a longer period of time, which keeps, releases it and keeps the price, the price stable, and releases it as the market demands, rather than flooding the market with everything that comes ripe at once. The new facility supports the idea of one-shop-stopping, which is really how the industry is tending to move toward. This gets back to why a facility of this size. And given increased freight costs, increased fuel costs, the trend in the industry is to be able to go to one location, pick up, you know, a greater volume of produce, a greater variety of produce, rather than having to drive to various locations to get the volume that's desired and to get to the variety of produce that's desired. The new facility will address new food safety regulations, homeland security regulations that really, again, protects America's food supply. And additional benefits, it benefits the public by allowing farmers to meet food supply demands. And again, just the facility itself is really integral to the success of the produce industry and farmers in general. And if you want to go on to the next slide, get through that. Just a quick illustration of two of the existing facilities that our client owns that are in the middle of the urban area, and then these would be consolidated to the new facility. Just quickly, the Agricultural Preserve Advisory Committee reviewed the project in February and determined that the facility is consistent with the Uniform Rules, provided that the Board of Supervisors makes the necessary substantial benefit finding. We've gone to the N-bar twice in 2006 and earlier this year. Both times, the project was favorably received with relatively minor comments relating particularly to just more native landscape planning and building colors, and we were okay to submit for preliminary review. And then twice was reviewed by the Ag Advisory Committee, first time in January 2006, which was prior to the Uniform Rules update. At that time, the facility was well-received. The Ag Advisory Committee found that the facility was appropriate in size and that it would bring tremendous commitment to the long-term stability and, for agriculture in the county. And then, most recently, in March, and so this is post-update of the Uniform Rules, again, the committee found that it would be a substantial benefit to the ag community and the public for many of the reasons I just previously cited. So in summary, we are here to request your recommendation of approval to the board. The facility would serve a critical function for growers in the ag industry and the produce industry, would result in numerous benefits to the agricultural community and the public. And the applicant's financial investment would bring commitment and stability to the agricultural community for decades to come. And we do have some comments on the conditions of approval, particularly the 25-mile rule as has been discussed, and I can either go into that now or at a more appropriate time when you've been deliberating.
I will-
Well, I'll make the comment that I don't care for either one of the conditions, the way they're written, and the reason I have a problem with either one of them is there's no clarity in them. I think I, the one that the staff is recommending talks about the fact that they're going to give, that they're going to have the applicant give them a report yearly. So he gives them a report, but there's no guidelines here for how much of the produce is outside of the 25-mile range. And of course, his talks about the primary purpose, that it won't exceed, I think the question I have for, for Mr. Rice perhaps, is, is there some kind of maximum percentage of produce that you might process outside the 25-mile range? I'm not sure I understand the limitation of the 25-mile range. I'm not sure I understand his need to process outside that range, although I can guess. But I would be much happier with the condition that says that, rather than the primary purpose of the facility, say that his production outside the 25-mile won't exceed X percentage of his total production, or, I could go live with 50%. I'm just saying, I don't like either one of them because there's no clarity. I don't see how anybody could have any enforcement of either condition.
All right. And our initial take on that was that we didn't want any special condition. The Land Use and Development Code addresses agricultural processing facilities. We didn't feel that there was a need to place a special condition on the project. To our knowledge, no other cooling facilities have had this type of condition placed on it, either with regard to, you know, radius of produce received, or with regard to monitoring. So our position was, you know, the code addresses these facilities, let's leave it at that. The, clearly, the intention of the facility is to predominantly process produce that's grown in Santa Barbara County, in the Santa Maria area. It really doesn't make economic sense in this day and age in terms of fuel costs to bring in produce from, you know, a great distance, but there will be times in the year where they will want to process produce theirs from the out of the area, whether due to temporarily kind of lulls in the harvesting within this area, because there is a limited number of crops grown in Santa Barbara County, or because, for example, the, with the value-added component, if you've got a salad mixture, there may be one component of that mixture that's not grown locally, and so that might be something that they want to bring in from the out-of-the-area to add into the mixture of produce and product that is grown within the local region. I don't know if, as far as percentage-
You know, I would hate to put any kind of a percentage because the agriculture industry today is moving very fast in all directions. And we're not building a facility to bring in product from out of the area. That's not the reason we're building the facility. We're building it to cool product in Santa Maria. But in order to make Santa Maria a viable agricultural area, we need to- But in order to make Santa Maria a viable agricultural area, we need to increase the number of items that we offer to shippers. If you go to Salinas, you'll find out that they probably, their coolers handle maybe twice as many items as what we do in Santa Maria. Some of them are three boxes of this, five boxes of that. Well, it's not economical for us to grow them here, but it is economical on those items to bring them in, have them available. So if we ship Safeway, they may take a load of 50 different items. And as Claudia said before, when that happens, then their truck makes one stop. Because the day where trucks go around, everybody's cooler in the valley to load something different is not happening anymore. The value-added facility, what that, at certain times of the year, there's crops that cannot be grown in Santa Barbara County because of the weather, such as in the winter. So those items are grown in Yuma or in Brawley. And there would be a necessity to bring those in to continue the salad mix or whatever you are selling. At that point, it may be 50 percent of what's going through the facility, but it is also keeping the people that are working for you, working year-round instead of being laid off drawing welfare. And it keeps the facility going. And so these are the types of things that we are trying to fill in so that it's a complete facility. And, and that's, that's why it's really tough. And you could monitor it, but all the other coolers have no monitoring. They're doing this. It seems like kind of an unfair burden to put on, on this new facility.
Okay. So I guess my next question would be for staff, is that, do we have to have this condition at all? I understand you're trying to conform with the other component of the land use, but can we not have the condition at all?
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Blau. Ultimately, the intent of adding the condition to this project, and it is the first time a monitoring condition of this sort has been added to a cooling facility. And that's because this is the first cooling facility that's ever had to make this significant benefit finding before. So staff feels it's appropriate to add a monitoring condition like this in order for the board to make the appropriate finding that this facility will be a significant benefit to local agriculture. Ultimately, if the board feels that they can make that finding without this condition or with a modified version of it, you know, staff's obviously amenable to the project moving forward under that decision by the board. And I would like to remind you that we're, we're here to get a recommendation from the Planning Commission on, to what action the board should take. So ultimately, you guys can, you know, recommend no condition or any alternative condition you'd like for the board to consider.
Okay.
Great.
Okay. Just for myself, I'm going to be frank. While I didn't like the original staff presentation, I wasn't entirely fond of the no, no concept that was presented by the applicant. I think Mr. Edie's subsequent presentation, because of the notion that this benefit has been articulated, I'm interested in hearing further why that condition of reporting it, of acknowledging that it's fulfilling the virtues that it says it is. I don't see that as particularly onerous at this point. But that might be something to argue during deliberation. And I want to keep us on track because we will open for public comment. Do you have some more questions?
Not, not, not right now, no.
Okay. Do you have more presentation?
I had just a couple of other conditions that we wanted to address, which I can, again, either do now or.
Let's do it now.
Okay. Just a couple of things. There's a restriction about construction hours, that they be 7:00 to 4:00 p.m., 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And we just wanted to go on record that there may be occasions where we would need to exceed those hours, for example, in pouring foundation, concrete for foundations that have to be done all in the same day. There's just, sometimes you can't get it done in that timeframe. And we talked to the contractor and he said there's probably going to be about 15 days in the construction cycle where it would be necessary to go beyond the 4:00 p.m. time, but still within reasonable daytime hours. So I just want to go on record with that. I just wanted to mention that there's a movement with local, other cooling facilities that are trying to address requirements that the fire department has with regard to water storage and building, builders, excuse me, building sprinklering, which are fairly onerous at this point. The buildings are required to be sprinkled. However, you're looking at facilities that are kept just above freezing temperature, really not conducive situation for a fire to actually develop or be maintained. So any support that the commission might find in recommending to the board that this issue be looked at further and considered further would be appreciated. And then with regard to the recent transportation letter that was added into the memo, we do appreciate it acknowledging that there'd be only a fair share proportional cost on the left-turn D-cell lane. However, we would like the opportunity to work further with staff prior to the Board of Supervisors' hearing, because the letter currently says that the applicant's share is 79 percent. And we believe that figure is incorrect based on the traffic study counts. So I think that's all we have. You know, and just regard with the 25-mile rule, it just, it replaces, places one more burden on the operator and that's currently not in place. And just want to emphasize that the Ag Preserve, or the, excuse me, the Agricultural Advisory Committee did not see that as, as a necessary step to take as far as monitoring. They felt that the facility, you know, the benefits are clear and it, and those benefits kind of stand on its own in terms of supporting agriculture in the local area and the region and, so.
Okay. Thank you. At this point, would be logical time to have public comment, and I have a distinct feeling there isn't any, but I will invite for public comment. It requires a speaker slip. It doesn't appear there is any, so I will bring it back to the commission. We'll close public hearing and we'll go back for commission questions. My colleagues, do you have any additional questions at this time? Commissioner Valencia.
Mr. Chair, I don't have any questions. I'd like to get into the deliberation, really.
I have a cheat sheet and I follow it. Protocol, you know. Okay. That being said, this is a fourth district project. Excuse me. Excuse me. Let me try it back up. Fifth district project. Therefore, Commissioner Blau, would you like to?
Yeah, I'll start. And I'm going to go ahead and probably state my preferences and then like to ask to hear from my other two commissioners. I'm in agreement with the applicant. I don't see any reason to have any conditions at all about processing product outside the 25-mile limit. The reality is, given the cost of transportation, given the cost of everything else, if it's possible for them to buy them and, and process the produce in this facility, they're going to do it, because it makes the most sense being close to the facility. By the same token, if he's going to process some crop that's not grown here, especially I can see this in his third phase when he's processing and packaging and delivering to the more retail users, I don't want to inhibit from, from doing that. This particular facility being located where it's at, off the freeway, there's not much development around it. I don't care if he brings in half of his produce from outside the area. I don't see where it's going to be a negative impact. I think it's going to be a positive impact on the county and in the farming group. So I'm going to, when I make my motion, probably delete condition, I believe it's C3. Relative to construction hours, I feel the same way. This is not in an area where construction at midnight is going to bother anybody. And so there's, I don't see the need for the 4 to 7 to 4:00 p.m. So I'll propose that comes out. Relative to the fire sprinklers, I don't think I can help you. I am pretty certain it's the purview of the fire marshal to make the determination whether the building is sprinkled or not. I agree with you that there are portions of the building that ought not be sprinkled. There are probably portions where, for example, your offices, where you have a lot of people in there, that probably should be sprinkled. But I know the fire marshal has the discretion to make the determination. Unfortunately, I don't even think the board has the discretion in that area, to tell you the truth. I think it's strictly the fire marshal's call. So I'm, I'm not going to propose any change in, in that condition. You'll have to just get together with him. And I will ask staff, though, is there anything in the staff report that requires fire sprinklers? Or is, am I correct that it's up to the fire marshal to, to make that determination?
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Blau. As all staff reports, we include department condition letters, one of which is always the fire department condition letter. Yes, they are requiring sprinklers for these buildings. And really, it's a trigger on the size of the building, not necessarily the use so much. So once you get above 5,000 square feet, you have to sprinkle the buildings.
I understand that. But I will tell you, the fire marshal has the authority to deviate from that condition if he wants to. So I'm not going to change the fire department's letter, but I can just tell you that's the way it works. So go see the fire marshal. He'll probably listen to you. I'd love to hear my commissioners on the rest of their comments.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. During my tenure here, this is the fourth cooling plant that we've dealt with. One was in, the first one was in the Santa Maria area, next one was in Los Alamos, the third one was in, on Telephone Road. None of them, none of them did we impose a 25 percent rule on them, that the crop had to be within 25 miles and that type of thing. So I would think it would be improper to do that at this time. The other items that were on there, I agree with Commissioner Blau. I mean, I think that the fire marshal probably dictates what the sprinklers, there's nothing we can do that, about that. The, the percentage that he has to pay on the left turns, perhaps we can have a little discussion on that. Why is he being asked to pay more than 50 percent? Why is he being asked, Mr. Edie, why is he asked to pay 79 percent?
Chairman Jackson and Commissioner Valencia, when a developer is the sole reason why the need is being triggered for the improvement of a roadway, normally the developer is, you know, 100 percent obligated to pay for that improvement.
But he's reimbursed when the other one on the other side does his part. He's reimbursed for that part, isn't he? He, he only pays for his, his, up to the center line, doesn't he?
Ultimately, the, I believe you're talking about the mid-coast cooler.
Right.
And they were required to install a right-hand turn lane, not a center deceleration lane. So my only guess would be that Will Robertson, our transportation planner, figured out some quotient of when they widened the road for the right-hand turn lane, that could potentially already achieve some of the.
Going in an easterly direction, making a left turn on Rosemary. He would benefit because that's how his vehicles are going to go in. The property facing his property on Rosemary Road, at some point, it will be beneficial to them for that left turn, so that somebody, all those properties should bet, should pay for that acceleration, de-acceleration lane.
Ultimately, I would have to defer to our Public Works Transportation Planner on that. Luckily, we're only getting a recommendation from the commission, so you can recommend that, that issue be dealt with in the maximum extent feasible before we go to the board.
The property in front, I don't know if it belongs to his property, but the property in front is a big strawberry agricultural process. And they probably bring as many trucks in there as this facility would. So at every rate, I think it should be a little bit more fair and equitable. The concern I had, items that I discussed with you, is when we had the other coolers in here, this room was full of people. Complaints about noise, about startup times, about de-acceleration lanes, about every conceivable thing you could think of. There isn't anybody here complaining. So the only thing I was wondering is, as you look at Rosemary, the poles were up there, the electrical poles, is that's going to be underground at some particular point when Phase Two comes in? Or what is the plan for that?
Chairman Jackson, Commissioner Valencia, the transportation planners, because they control the public right-of-way, are the ones who condition the undergrounding of utilities. This project is conditioned undergrounded. It's up to the public works to decide when the undergrounding takes place.
So that frontage, when he completes, I have no idea when it's going to be completed, but say when he completes Phase Two, those poles will all be undergrounded in front of his facility on Rosemary?
I don't believe that the Public Works Department has specified at this time the exact timing of when the underground would take place. I know that in certain instances, when there is a larger plan to underground utilities along an entire stretch of roadway, they will let individual projects defer until that larger undergrounding takes place.
But it will be undergrounded.
That, right now, the project is conditioned to require that.
Okay. And the last item was, in the other cooling plants, there was always concern about the vehicles that, or the trailers that bring in the produce always are full of mud from being out in the field. And the amount of mud that was left on the road, is there a process that they clean this mud off of those big wheels to make sure that they're not putting all this mud out on the roads? You know, after a rain, they have this huge, and you, as you drive up on those roads, you see these chunk, big chunks of mud. Do they have some kind of a spray, high-pressure water thing that they clean those things with?
Chairman Jackson and Commissioner Valencia, perhaps the applicant can better address how they deal with that in their current facilities. I do know that state, you know, mandated stormwater regulations cover that to a certain extent. And this project will also be reviewed by Project Clean Water in the future before it's approved.
Okay. That's my last question, Mr. Chair. If they could answer that, that would be fine.
What?
Maybe Jim can probably answer the truck question. Just one more point on the, the fair share percentage. In talking with Will Robertson, he acknowledged that under the existing conditions, that, that left-turn lane is warranted. And the traffic study counts showed between 575 and 857 peak hour trips, depending on AM or PM. This trip, this project adds 29 PM trips and 27 AM peak hour trips. So clearly, that 79 percent seems, seems out of proportion. So we'll, you know, hopefully work on that with, with staff. And maybe that was, it could have been a typo, who knows? We didn't have the opportunity to discuss the revised letter with Mr. Robertson.
Okay. Commissioner Valencia, you're one who gets me on protocol. We're in deliberations.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chair.
Go ahead. You're absolutely right. I apologize.
But I have a feeling I heard a sufficient and enough answer that we'll deal with that. But I might be editorializing, but I don't want to. Okay. I believe that to come to a conclusion on this, it requires probably three votes.
Two.
Oh, it just needs two? Okay. Well, so goes my leverage. No. I'm in support of this project in general. However, there are a couple of things. I rely on Commissioner Blau to tell me whether there's fair payment as a developer for fees that go along with this. So if he is satisfied with the structure there, that is not going to be a stumbling point for me. I agree with Commissioner Blau that the fire elements may be out of our purview, but I'm sure he's, the applicant is represented by people who know, who do, who do make that decision and can pursue it. And it is not, in and of itself, if they can get a better deal, that's not going to be a challenge for me to overcome. I usually rely on what the local expectations are for hours of operation, construction operation. And this is a long ways away from my district, and it appears to be a long ways away from residential to the type of burden that would be anticipated by construction hours. However, as long as we are not indulging in a precedent-setting maneuver by being relaxed on that, I am not going to have that be a hurdle for me. That leaves me with the issue of the reporting with regard to the 25-mile limit. When I first spoke to Mr. Edie, and we talked about the suggestions that he had, the language, I asked if a sunset provision on any kind of requirement for that would be practical. And the reason I said that was, my memory is of a significant discussion about localizing the cooling facilities to the local farms. I'm in agreement, that's the target, that's the objective. This project has some variances. It must be viewed as a special, a perceived unique benefit. To me, I wanted to be able to see a history that it was meeting the targets, that all of the somewhat angst-ridden discussions during the uniform rules debate and the passion with which this type of use were pushed, so that it demonstrates that we are cutting down truck traffic, that we are centralizing this so that, that this is inherently efficient, inherently environmentally sensitive, and is doing what we hoped it would do. So my leaning was to retain what Mr. Edie had come up with as wording with the. So, my leaning was to retain what Mr. Edie had come up with as wording, with the possible addition, if it were possible, and I regretfully, I'm new, so I don't know of such a sunset provision, when a demonstration of it doing what it set out to do is. I'm a little concerned about lots more trucks making a greater distance haul to this site, because I got the sense that, the argument was that that would not be the case. And this is probably a bit of a fishbowl proposition, because it is a big one, it is one that we have been waiting for, and that I think will provide the benefits that are articulated. So, I don't have as much of a prob, I don't think a monitoring is as much as a self-reporting, which we do ask of wineries and vineyards, is all that out of the question. So, I sort of feel that it will prove its point, or prove this over a certain period of time, and perhaps that condition could be, I liked Mr. Edie's wording, I liked the concept, but I also wanted to add some way that it could sunset out, if it proves out what was set to be done. That's my thinking. I will, that's why I went there, that's why I felt that way, just because of the arguments and the intensity of the arguments, and the fact that it dragged on for quite some time, the universal, excuse me, uniform rules discussion did, and this was a fixture and a passionate component of that discussion. So, that's my, my thinking of how, if I were crafting this, that I would, that's where I would go. So, I hope that helps Commissioner Blau in your decision-making.
Let me just state, I don't know how to define primary purpose, and that's my problem in either of the, either the applicant's requested condition or the one that the staff asked. And even if they were to report, and let's say they were to report that 49% of the produce was, was from outside the 20-mile area, is that the primary purpose? I don't know. So, I'm not sure I understand the reason for the language in the L U D C anyway, but I'm not going to make that one of the conditions when I make my motion, and the board can take it up, and if they find it's a problem, so be it. I will make one of the comment before I make my motion, and that is the decision of the 27 acres on the 40-acre parcel. It'd be my best guess that when the 50% rule was put in, that no one had the foresight to think about financing the processing facility, and I can clearly understand that. This is almost a case where a TDR might work very well. This should actually, in my opinion, be a 27-acre parcel, so that the other 13 acres could be attached to the adjacent parcel and would be agriculture. And if there was some way to do that, I'd do that here today, so that you could finance just 27 acres in your facility, would make perfect sense. So, I think we need to clearly understand, that's the reason, I'm saying, that's the reason, I think, for the 50%, and I'm not sure what's 50%, but I think if they'd have thought that through, they would have come up with some other little condition that would have, you know, taken into consideration the issue of financing. With all that being said, I'm now ready to go ahead and go forward and make the motion. So, do this a little carefully here. So, if we look at page two and three of our staff report, we find the six recommendations, and I think I need to exclude, I believe it's Attachment C-3, so I'm not going to, I'm not going to make the motion as number six. Do I have that right, staff? Tell me if I'm doing this correctly. Recommendation one is the SEQA findings, recommendation two is the addendum to the uniform rules, the 4EIR-8, recommend to approve 06RZ75, 06TPM19, five, excuse me, 6DVP9, and also with the deletion of the prohibition against working other than seven to four.
There is a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Now, they'll be able to work 75. There aren't, there ain't...
There are definitely no conditions on running hours of construction, because it's out in the boonies.
Yeah, that was my concern. There's no, there aren't any houses around in the area, any, Pappy's is the closest, is half a mile, quarter a mile away or something. I second that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor with a second, and I don't see any further discussion. Therefore, Letitia, would you like to do a roll call?
Commissioner Blau?
Yes.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
Okay, at this juncture, we will...
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I apologize if I haven't, I was trying to find what was going on in terms of the conditions of approval for the CUP. That motion, I hope, did not exclude all conditions of approval for the CUP, but rather simply the condition for the, that was discussed. Could we have some clarification on that from staff?
C-3, item three, I didn't get the, C-3, item three.
Item three.
And C-2.
Can we just, for the sake of argument, have the amended motion read for the record, please? And who would like to take a stab at that? Commissioner Blau, do you want to?
I think I'll let our counsel just clearly state what he thinks my motion is, and then we can agree that that's what it was.
If counsel...
That way, we'll have no mistakes here.
If we can...
Chairman Jackson and Commissioner Blau, I think I can clarify. According to Commissioner Comment, I think what needs to happen is to recommend what staff recommended, with the exception of Condition Two in Attachment C-2 should be deleted, which is the noise condition, and Condition Three in Attachment C-3, which is the 25-mile limitation, should be deleted as well. And therefore, we retain the rest, the remainder of the conditions.
That would be my motion.
I already said it.
That would be the intent of my motion.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Abrish has a comment with respect to C-3.
Chairman Jackson, Commissioners, conditions of approval, C-3 also have the noise condition, so we've got to delete it from, in our recommendation number five, we need to delete Condition Two, and in our recommendation number six, we need to delete Condition Two and Three.
So moved.
Can I, so from my understanding, because I, I think I read that, you deleted the 25-mile, the monitoring verbiage?
That's correct.
Okay, well, I've made my case for it. I, I think that politically, it's prudent, but I will not alter my participation thus far on that basis. Therefore, I believe we have a motion and a vote, and it, do we need to vote that it is amended to reflect the changes?
Mr. Chair, simply to make the record clear, I think your recommendation, you should have another vote on the recommendation as clarified.
Okay. Therefore, Commissioner Blau has acceded to the clarification of the motion, which reflects the changes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Jackson, it's in C-1 as well, on the map.
The noise condition. Insidious, isn't it?
So, we've got to delete it from C-1. So, our recommendation number four would be, recommend that the board approve 6TPM19, subject to the conditions included as Attachment C-1, with the deletion of Condition Two. The next one would be number five, recommend that the board approve the DVP, subject to conditions included as C-2, deleting Condition Two, again, the noise condition. And number six, recommend that the board approve 6CUP43, subject to the conditions, with deletion of Condition Two, the noise, and Three, the 25-mile.
That's correct.
All right, I think at this point, we will have a roll call to restate the motion as amended and clarified. Letitia?
Commissioner Blau?
Yes.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, at this juncture, I think it's time to take lunch until 1:30, if that is all right with people. So be it. And they say I don't. We're back on the record, May 14th, Santa Barbara Planning Commission, and we are on to item three. And Letitia, would you like to read that into the record, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following is the hearing on the request of John Wickenden, owner of, to consider case number 08LLA1, application filed on January 17, 2008, and to accept 03ND010 as adequate environmental review for case number 08LLA pursuant to Section 15162 of the State Guidance for Implementation of SEQA.
Okay, thank you very much. Good afternoon, Ms. Carmichael. Are we ready to roll?
Yes, we are. Good afternoon, Chairman Jackson and members of the commission. The case before you today is the request for a lotline adjustment on property located approximately two miles south of the intersection of Tepesque and Fox and Canyon Roads in the rural area of Sisquik, and it's commonly known as 7181 Fox and Canyon Road. The project site is located within the Ag-2 100 Zone District, and is currently developed with a 3,145-square-foot single-family dwelling and a 2,111-square-foot farm employee dwelling. This is an aerial view of the current configuration of the two lots involved in the proposed project. Lot one is currently 320 acres gross and net, and Lot Two is 373 acres gross and net. And Fox and Canyon Road is depicted in green. The current configuration is a result of a previous lotline adjustment, also known as the Wickenden Lotline Adjustment, which was approved by the Planning Commission on February 11 of 2004. After the lotline adjustment, reconfigured Lot One would be 401 acres gross and net, and reconfigured Lot Two would be 292 acres gross and net. And reconfigured Lot One would contain the single-family dwelling with garage, and reconfigured Lot Two would contain the farm employee dwelling with garage. And the structures are located within development envelopes, which were approved under the previous lotline adjustment. The Agricultural Preserve Advisory Committee found the project consistent with the uniform rules, with the attainment of replacement contracts. Therefore, a condition was added to the project requiring the attainment of replacement contracts prior to map recordation. The project was reviewed under SEQA Section 15162, which allows the use of a previously certified EIR or negative declaration. In this case, 03ND10, prepared for the previous lotline adjustment, is, is still applicable to the proposed project. The project meets all policy consistency requirements, including Chapter 21 subdivision In conclusion, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the required findings for the project, including SEQA findings, except 03ND10 pursuant to SEQA Section 15162 as adequate environmental review, and approve the project subject to the conditions of approval. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available to answer questions, and also, the owner and applicant, Mr. Wickenden, is also here.
Okay. Are there any question, before we go to questions, maybe we should have our ex parte and site visit disclosure. Do my colleagues wish to do so? Commissioner Valencia?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I visited the, I got as far as the gate, and there was, it was gated. I went on Sunday and saw, there's two addresses, his addresses on the right-hand side and the other one on the left-hand side. So, I had a nice ride, went up and down and saw as much as I could.
Huh, I thought that was your truck. I drove by and did identically the same thing, and as a result, took some opportunity to obtain beverages in the neighborhood. Commissioner Blau?
No site visit, but I'm familiar with the area.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff at this time? Seeing none, would the applicant like to present any information at this time? You're welcome to do so, and greetings and welcome.
Thank you.
Well, first, I'd like to thank Dana Carmichael for preparing today's presentation, and also to thank the planning commissioners for giving us an opportunity to present our lotline adjustment request. Essentially, there's no changes, except just one lotline, increasing a parcel that's already there. The purpose of this is, we have two tax districts. The Los Alamos Cemetery Tax District is in part of one of the parcels, and the Santa Maria Public Airport District is also in the same parcel. So, we're dividing that up, so that the tax districts match the new lotline adjustments. And also, it's our request that we would have separate parcels for each development envelope and home site. Any other questions that anybody might have?
I'm trying to think to come up with one, except that, boy, it's lovely territory out there. And I don't have any questions. To follow my protocol at this point, then, I would invite public comment from the enormous amount of public that we have. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the commission for any questions, further questions and/or deliberations. I recognize this is a fifth district project, and I got it right this time. Commissioner Blau?
You're correct. Well, based on outstanding, excellent presentation by staff, having no questions, I'll move for approval, as outlined on page two of the report, conditions one through three.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Okay, at this juncture, we'd have discussion, any discussion? Not seeing any, I believe we're prepared for a roll call.
Commissioner Blau?
Aye.
Commissioner Valencia?
Aye.
Commissioner Jackson?
Aye.
Motion passes 3-0.
That has to be a record.
I just, I have one question for David on the...
Projection report?
Projection report, and that is, I guess we aren't, the last time when we had the discussion about, oh, let me see here, the May 28 hearing, discussion of the Brown Act violations, we are going to hear that, is that correct? Because last time we had the report, they weren't sure if it was going to stay on the agenda or not.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Blau, if you, when you said David, I thought it was projection report request. That's fine. And I apologize, I'm sorry, I don't know the answer to that, because I'm not familiar with that issue at all. I was not on that project, didn't appear at the hearing, didn't watch it. I'm just not familiar with the issue. Sorry. I'd suggest a call to our office, I think perhaps Bill Dillon is counsel on that, and may be able to answer the question.
It wasn't that big a issue, I just was curious, yeah.
Okay. I think we are, are we, Commissioner Valencia has a host of other items that he wanted to bring up today to take us on for a couple more hours?
Mr. Chair, I have 38 items I'd like to go over, but in view of the lateness of the...
Of the hour.
Yeah, of the hour, I'm just going to let them go.
Well, on that note, I think we should adjourn, and so, right, it's been a pleasure having you with us today, and we're done.